Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Milton Planning Board for Thursday, October 8th, 2015. This is our seventh meeting of the fiscal year. My name is Emily Innis. I'm the chair. I'm going to ask the other members to introduce themselves and then I will run through tonight's agenda before we get started.
Alex Whiteside, member.
Brian, sorry.
Julia Getman, board member.
Great, and we've got a couple of other people on their way. So let me run through what we're going to do tonight. We're going to hold on the past minutes. I've got a backlog sitting on my email that I need to go through, so we're going to take those up as a bunch at our next meeting. Next meeting dates, October 22nd, October 26th, which is town meeting, November 12th, and then before we leave tonight, we need to talk about the meetings for November and December because currently we are scheduled to meet Thanksgiving Day, which I'm guessing is not going to happen. Exactly. And we're also scheduled to meet Christmas Eve, which I suspect is not going to happen. So maybe the last item we can take up tonight at those meetings. We're going to do Citizen Speak, and there will be a special Citizen Speak for 333 Brushhill Road, so I'll explain that in a minute. Under new business, we have an A&R for 44 Forest Street. We're going to take that up first. We have some continued business, 333 Brushhill Road. We're going to be deliberating the draft site plan approval tonight, and as part of that, we will have a special Citizen Speak when we get to that point. So anybody who is here to speak to 333 Brushhill Road, don't speak at the normal Citizen Speak, speak when we get to 333 Brushhill Road. Thayer Nursery, we are continuing our deliberation of the conditions for that special permit and site plan approval, and then we will also have a brief discussion of the zoning articles for the October town meeting and beyond. So that's where we're going tonight. We're going to start with the A&R for 44 Forest Street, assuming everybody is here for that, and then we are going to move on to 333 Brushhill Road and then to Thayer Nursery. So with that, the A&R for 44 Forest Street. Welcome. Introduce yourself. Yeah, just bring that up.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Joe Webby from Webby Engineering. We're presenting a plan tonight that we believe doesn't represent a subdivision under the subdivision control law. The applicant owns these two lots on Forest Street and wishes to reconfigure the interior lot line of those two lots. You can see the small portion that I've indicated is orange. Here was a portion of this lot that was going to be attached to this one, and then a larger portion of this lot here, which would be combined with this lot here. The resulting lots have the required frontage and the required area for an RA zone, and we believe it's an A&R.
Any questions from board members? Bill, did you have anything that you wanted to?
Would you explain what all these parcels are? I mean, it seems to me you've got one big parcel now. Is that right?
No, it's actually two parcels under one certificate of title.
You've got two parcels.
Yeah, maybe just... So if you could just outline for us exactly the current and the proposed.
This red line here is the current lot line between these two parcels. We're taking a portion of Lot 3A, and we're combining it with Lot 3B, and then we're also taking a small portion of Lot 3B and combining it with Lot A.
So the purple hatching there, that's becoming part of 3B?
Parcel.
And the sort of pink color is becoming part of 3A, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
There's only two parcels, 3A, 3B.
There's parcel A, there's parcel N12, 3B.
No, here's his new numbers. Here's the new area. Here's the new area. This is where it started. These are the numbers that started. These are the new parcels. These are existing.
This is...
This is currently.
Well, I mean, the parcel seems fine.
Yeah, parcel A and parcel B are the parts being relocated, correct?
They just changed.
Into the larger... Right, understood.
Parcel B, bigger.
Parcel A is what's represented by the orange, and parcel B is what's represented by the purple hash.
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Well, the lot lines indicate that both are... Both... I don't... I think it's what you've done is confusing, but I'm going to, since the lots are conforming however you've done it.
All right.
It's all right with me.
Brian?
I'm fine.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I... My move that we authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan is not requiring subdivision approval.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Where did this come from?
That was mine.
Oh.
Okay. So in my hurry to get to the A&R, I forgot to ask if there were citizens who did... wanted to speak to something other than 333 Brushhill Road. My apologies. Is there anybody who wants to speak to us on anything other than 333 Brushhill Road? All right, if not, we're going to move to that. So on 333 Brushhill Road, the public hearing has been closed already. At our last meeting, we had a number of citizens who wanted to speak at Citizen Speak, and we invited them to come back to speak. I mean, obviously, we heard them then, but we invited them to come back since the decision was going to be discussed... the draft decision was going to be discussed at tonight's meeting. So although this is not a public hearing, we're going to run it fairly similarly to the public hearing in that we're going to have the applicant give us an update on what has happened since our last meeting. We understand from some comments he made at the beginning of... right before our meeting started that there have been some changes to the plan. Alex has written a draft decision, which we're going to be discussing, so he's going to let us know what's changed with the plan. I'm going to let the board ask questions as we would do for a public hearing, and then I'm going to invite those who are here to speak tonight to speak to what they want to say about this, and then the board will move into our deliberations on the draft decision that Alex has written. So that's how we are going to work it, and I think the applicant is setting up now. Great, excellent. So, and then these plans that are being distributed now are the ones that have changes on them, and you're going to walk us and the public through those changes, is my understanding, so.
Do you want a big set or a small set?
A big set's fine.
The same size as your stuff.
Yep.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Is he wearing the F3?
Ready, have a seat.
You've got one. Wait. Oh. Yeah, I'll have the big ones. I'll stand up and grab it.
Stand up here and describe.
Yes, please.
For the record, my name is Frederick Isel, a professional civil engineer working with Civil Environmental Consultants. I'm here with Ken Buhar from Civil Environmental Consultants, and Mr. McKenna is in the back. There was a site visit, a site meeting, and we were requested to add a few things which we didn't have in terms of details on the plans. The gas main connection, which we have, our road, access road, and it comes down parallel to the existing sewer line, so it's following the same path that we'd already be using and connecting to the gas main. Very simple, straightforward. We're asked also to put in the underground electrical telephone cable utilities, which is basically conduits which run along the side of the road servicing the houses, again connecting into existing facilities. Most significant change we made in the plans was to relocate the underground infiltration basin to save a number of specimen trees, which are in the foreground in the area, and we've shown those trees on this plan here so we can illustrate that the detention basin or infiltration basin used to be further up this part of the property and would, because of grading and, you know, the actual installation of the infiltrators, would have to remove those trees. There was a couple other trees further down, a 16-inch and a 30-inch tree, which, because of grading, would be lost, and we've changed the grading and revised that and moved the structure so we'll be able to save all of those trees. And that the detention area would be slid further down the hill, further away from the other houses, further away from the roadway, the driveway. We still have the detention area on the uphill side, 40 feet away from the nearest property line on the corner, and again, everything is, in terms of stormwater, is flowing in this direction to the northwest. And the far side, it's over 50 feet, 52 feet from the property line, and again, the direction of flow is down in this direction here, so it's still substantial distance from where flow might be, you know, overflow. And we're only looking at the 100-year storm as being an overflow. In all situations, all small storms, all storms up through, including the 25-year storm, would be contained within this area with no overflow. The overflow, as we had described before, is in a level spreader, so it discharges out the side and runs down a, basically, a long trench, the length of that, and then basically dissipates over a long length. And I think those are the only changes. We did make a couple changes in between the contours and around the houses so that we could, again, save more of the specimen trees, and we were requested if we can do some work to, while we're in construction, you know, move something around a little bit.
Move the...
The board.
They said, we've all got plans. We don't need to... No, the other way.
Okay, well, I have one. Face the other way, but I'll face it this way here, too. So...
What?
That doesn't look like...
Oh, they've got one. Oh, okay, that's good. Now, why don't you show where the water line's going to go? They're all within the development, right?
Yes.
And you just, with your finger, trace, show the water line, show the gas line, show the electric line, show the cable...
Okay, let me try to get all the...
And make clear that the Beacon Street, what's called the unbuilt portion of Beacon Street, is not going to be touched.
No, where the water line and... Yeah, just the water line connects into the... where the existing water line is on Beacon Street, at the end of the unbuilt portion.
But it exists.
It exists. It exists right here. We're going to tap into that and run it down through this property, down to service the all the units. It's going to connect back up as a loop so we don't have a dead end water line, connect back up to the existing water line, which runs between Beechwood 1, 2, and 3, and Brushwood House at that location. The gas main will connect to the existing gas main, which is on here, nowhere near Beacon Street or anything in that location, it's connecting out towards Brushhill Road, where the existing line is, and go into the property to serve the property. The sewer will be connecting into, it's a force main, from individual pumps from each house, connecting in and pumping out, connecting to the existing sanitary sewer, gravity sewer, which is out in this location. The underground utilities will connect to existing utilities that dead end here and connect around off the side of the roadway, connecting to each of the houses. These are the electrical telephone cable conduits. They're, you know, plastic conduits in the ground. That is pretty much it for the utilities. Stormwater is all self-contained, collecting stormwater from catch basins, running into from both sides of our drive, connecting it to here and treating it, and then discharging it to infiltration basin located in this area.
And show the construction entrance where the construction vehicles will use.
Right, be on the... Off of the existing drive, there'll be a construction there with, which made with large stone, crushed, you know, crushed stone to be able to knock any dirt that may accumulate in our tires or truck tires off of there to be... and then to be cleaned out as necessary, but keep that so that there won't be... Construction vehicles will not be tracking material off-site.
And they're going to access from Smith Road, is that right?
I don't see... Yeah, I don't see Smith.
I don't... Does that have a name? I guess it's between Beechwood and the Beechwood 1 and 2, 3, 4. Is that Smith Road? I'm sure I'm...
Coming in. Coming in on Smith.
Smith Road.
Straight down. It goes around... Let's see, sorry. Sorry, sorry, 1 and 2. Hooks around, and then it goes right into the existing drive. It's a straight shot. If you go to page 1.
Okay. Smith Road comes around. This is Smith Road on here, right?
Smith Road.
Right.
Comes in, goes like this.
It goes in through...
Here.
Okay, right. Right down to here. Okay. Right, okay. I'm sorry. Smith Road. In the ties right here. That's Smith Road.
All right. Questions from board members?
The unbuilt section of Beacon Street is not going to be used for anything. Is that correct?
Uh...
Other than the fact the existing water main...
Main is there.
Is there, but nothing else is proposed for it?
No.
Nothing?
Nothing, no. No.
Mike? Anything from you? Brian?
I don't have any questions.
All right, so what I'm going to do now is I'm going to open it up to public comment. Standard rules apply, which is, please come forward when I recognize you. Speak into the mic. You'll see there's a new... We've been having some sound problems, so you'll see there's a new instruction card up at the front there. State your name and address for the record. Direct all your questions to me, and I'll see that they get answered, and no cross-examination. And please, who would like to speak first? Anyone? I saw his hand first, yours, sir, in the brown jacket. Yep, and then I saw Jeff. I saw you next.
Thank you so much. I'm Tom Denly. I'm from 16 Beacon Street Circle.
Please have a seat, yes.
Tell them about the two microphones.
I did.
Move the handheld one.
I'll put them both together.
No, no, you can only do one at a time. Bill, can you grab the handheld?
Okay.
You use the handheld.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm 16 Beacon Street Circle. I'm the one who asked you, please, to write that letter.
Yes.
Okay. I heard this gentleman, as an engineer, quote, "100-year circumstances." I think right now we have too many 100-year circumstances. We just went through a winter of too much snow. I mean, if they have worried about 100-year, just think of South Carolina right now, all over the place. They can't work with 100-year because we're going through climate change. Working with those type of numbers, they're out of date. 100-year numbers are long since out of date, and if he's worried... Has he given us any reason that thinks that he thinks this runoff water is going to go down our hills or whatever? We don't really want it. These people from Brushwood wanted to insulate themselves behind their fences. We don't want them coming into our small area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff, you're next.
Thank you, madam chair and members of the planning board. My name is Jeff Wilkinson, and I live at 199 Beacon Street, and I'd like to start by thanking the chair and Member Whiteside for your help over the course of the last week, and generally for the board's responsiveness to the concerns we brought here last week. It's extremely heartening to us to see the quality of listening and the quality of response, and we're looking to forward to hearing a little bit more detail about the plan the board will be considering. I have two questions. Perhaps you could interpret Mr. Denly's comments a moment ago into a question. I think some of us share the question of what does 100-year storm mean, and is the board satisfied that the plans that they are proposing for drainage satisfy what is, you know, probably a good point that we were into a new normal? So are you satisfied that the provisions they're proposing are adequate? And secondly, we've heard and we appreciate the humor that nothing is going to be happening from the Beacon Street dead-end side, but could you explain to us in a little bit more detail about what it means that the water main stops there? My understanding from communication with Mr. Whiteside is that whatever tie-in will be required will be happening from the Brushwood side, and that we will not experience any construction even for the water main tie-in from Beacon Street. But could you explain that or have that explained to us in more detail? Will they be running tractors or other construction equipment in from the Brushwood side right at the end of Beacon Street? What... How does that work? How does... Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Now, normally, I try and collect all questions before having the applicant respond, but I think in this case, a lot of you are going to have the same question. So I'm going to ask you first to describe your drainage calculations, how you are dealing with the new normal, and what you mean by 100-year storm and how you're dealing with that. And second, also, talk about the water main tie-in and how that's going to be accomplished.
Well, we have basically accommodated the new normal. Just a few years ago, the 100-year storm was measured in a 6.7-inch storm event. It has now been increased to 8.86 inches, which is about a 25 or 30 percent... 30 percent, I'd say, increase in the number, so... Which made a tremendous difference in terms of how much storage we needed to provide. And we have provided that, and we have met that, and our entire stormwater design and the stormwater management report has been reviewed and accepted by the peer reviewer, Lisa Eggleston, that the board had hired to do this work. It meets all standards from the town and from the state. And we have something like what happened in South Carolina, just an aside. You cannot prepare... I mean, some people talked about, well, they had 20 feet of water in their yard. You can't... You can't do anything except not to build at all on that location. So you can't prepare for that. You cannot prepare for someone getting in a weekend the much rainfall as Boston's gotten in this year so far. You just can't... You can't accommodate. You can't do... You can't accommodate that. And you build something, and to accommodate that, and you go 1,000 years, 2,000 years or forever. In our entire history, we have not seen rainfall to that extent. So you just have to basically make sure that everyone is safe from that. But we're not... We're talking about accommodating the runoff from the buildings being proposed individually on each site and from the area. Now, not just the building area we're building on, but several acres upstream that we're accommodating that.
And as part of that, can you just define 100-year storm?
100-year storm is one which has a probability... predictability based on past occurrences. We can't... Based on whether we're going to have sunspots or whether we're going to have global warming and the seas are going to rise 10 feet, but just on the past history of record-keeping, which in this area is around 145 years, since 1870, where they've kept accurate records of, you know, the tides and the rainfall and stream flow, et cetera. And that's... 100-year storm is one that has a probability of occurring once every 100 years. It has 1 percent probability of occurring in 2016.
Right. It's the 1 percent annual chance is the other way. Yeah.
Right, that's the way I put it. As far as the water main, and I'll sit down so I don't block the whole plan, but we're tying in at... As the water main is into the Brushhill property, the condominium property, as it's tying into there, we're probably about 15, 20 feet away from the end of the Beacon Street. And that's going to be accessed through an area that's cut through here from this area. There'd be no access off of Beacon Street. It's just tying into that water main construction. It's not a huge... It's an 8-inch water main in a relatively, you know, small sloped area. It's buried 5 feet deep. It goes... Actually installs fairly quickly in these conditions. So, you know, people... A good contractor will install this in two days. So it's pretty... It's pretty quick and...
Well, that's happening on the other side of the fence, is what you're saying?
Yes.
And if you'll step back, I'll see if anybody else has any further questions. Is there anybody else? Yes, ma'am, come forward, please.
My name is Dr. Donna Jones, and I live at 207 Beacon Street, which is the end of Beacon Street. I'm writing in reference to the Brushwood Estates' construction application under consideration by the planning board today. In the last meeting, our Beacon Street community expressed concern over proposed construction in the unbuilt section of Beacon Street. It's an invisible paper road, otherwise known as my backyard, at 207 Beacon Street, which is an actual dirt pathway cutting through abutting 220 Beacon Street in the Brushwood Estates. We are separated from the estates by a cedar fence. I want to thank the efforts made by Mr. Clark, the planning board, Mr. Prondak, Alexander Whiteside, and my ever-vigilant neighbors, Linda Meach, Jeff Wilkinson, and Emily, and our neighbors in the community. I was a recipient of a certified letter marked October 5th from the building commissioner stating the site work for the three single-family homes at Brushwood Estates would cease until they were given a site plan bearing an endorsement by the planning board. I also received an email from Mr. Whiteside, which described in detail the utility installation for water, sewer, gas, and electrical connections, as well as the diversion of construction vehicles rerouted to entrances through the Brushwood Estates. In addition, and much to the relief of my neighbor at 220 Beacon Street, drainage measures would be required prior to obtaining foundation permits. The property to the west of the new construction site has experienced flooding downhill from the estates, which would only be exacerbated by uprooting trees east of her property. The recent dialogue has been encouraging, and I'd like to request that the abutters of the property in the future be kept abreast of any new developments concerning the construction that would impact any further on the integrity of the environment and the value of the neighboring property. I thank you for listening. I don't have any further questions. I think it was explained pretty well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And then I see you in the back.
Thank you. Emily Speck, 84 Beacon Street Circle, which is not on the map, but is... The location should be there. I want to thank everyone involved for their patience with our community and for taking our concerns seriously and addressing them so thoroughly. I do want to just clarify, I know that it's been stated a couple times now that the tie-in will happen from the estate side, but I just want to clarify, does the water main currently go under the fence and just stop there? Or what is the current status of that water main? Because I'm not really clear on that and why it's kind of there just hanging out.
Bill? You can answer that. Okay.
The line was put in in 1934, and it's a 12-inch line that comes out of Beacon Street, runs through that property. The majority of the 12-inch line feeds the rest of Brushwood. This project is... This project is going to tap into that line, put in an eight-inch pipe that's going to go in front of the three houses, go around and tap back into the rest of that line elsewhere on the project, so that all of the, all of the water lines in that area are looped. Looping provides for, it provides for better security, better water, and ease of fixing when something breaks. It also was set up by the, our engineering department, the towns engineering department. They've reviewed all of these plans. These plans have also been peer-reviewed, so you've had belt suspenders checked after these guys did their work.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, I saw you. If you still wish to speak, yeah? Come on forward.
Perhaps, okay. I just want to ask...
Beacon's mine, yeah.
Okay. I do want to be sure that, and I see it now, those are the trees, the Beechwood trees that are at the perimeter, will be saved?
Name an address first, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the record, and then your question.
I'm sorry. I forgot. Oh, I thought you all knew me by now. Linda Meach, 188 Beacon Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to be absolutely sure those are the trees that you are planning on saving.
Okay. And point out the trees on the plan that you...
This is, yeah, this looks like, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so we're not planning anything else.
Is that forever?
Until they come back here.
Thank you, thank you very much for your consideration and care about the trees. We need all the biomass we have in the world. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Peter Platus. I live at 333 Brushhill Road. And I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to react to at least one thing that I heard. I lived there for eight or nine years, and I heard that we're, you know, trying to fence ourselves in and that we're, you know, really not neighborly, and I don't find that to be the case. I mean, for us to contain, to maintain control of the place, we manage it ourselves, and one of, and one of my jobs, and also to save some money, one of my jobs is to repair that famous fence. And in fact, the fence has turned out to be a way of meeting people, and I don't know if they're here necessarily, but there are some really warm feelings from the neighbors. And, you know, yes, I think it's great to specify the, these areas of concern, but I don't, it sounds like it's 100 percent against this, this community, and really, I don't find that, even though those people might not be here. So I just wanted to, to mention that in kind of a defense of, I think we're, we're good neighbors and we have good neighbors, you know?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? So if not, I'm going to turn this over to Alex. Alex volunteered, or was volunteered, I'm not sure which, to, to take over the drafting of the decision on this. So Alex, if you can walk us through the decision. I think everybody should have gotten the most recent one by email this afternoon, and...
What the decision does is say that what you've seen on the plans is what's going to be built, although there is a specific, a specific statement of the, having to do with the unbuilt section, saying there shall be no use of this unbuilt section for construction and for construction-related activities, and it shall in no event be used for access or egress from the site of the Brushwood property. So what you see on the plan is what you're going to get. I describe the renewed special permit under which this site plan approval is being granted. And then I talk about the terms and conditions, and the terms and conditions say the plans show what's going to happen. What happens is going to be shown on the plans, and if it's not shown on the plans, it's not going to happen. Talk about the site. The site plan approval concerns a portion of the Brushwood site, the portion on which these three houses will be built. The rest of the site is controlled by the site plan approval we gave some years ago. Drainage, the drainage what they've discussed is going to be what's built, and it's got to be kept in shape and working.
Could you describe, you've set it up so that the grading and drainage has to be done either prior to or concurrent with the building of the foundations? Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, well, this is just so that they don't start building the houses before they put in the drainage provisions, which simply says you can't start work on your houses. You can, you can put in the foundation, the slab on which they'll be built, because that's basically going to tie in with drainage structures, but they can't go beyond that until the drainage is installed, so as to prevent construction problems, construction drainage problems. The water main is discussed, about how it will tie in to the existing main and be accessed through the underground, what's called underground utility area. The gas main is shown, the electrical is shown. The new dwelling units, we have some elevations, elevations or sketches as to what the new unit's going to look at, and since this is in fact a private, I mean, it isn't a big condo development, it's a three-unit development, there is some leeway in their design, but they're going to have to tell us if they make any changes in what they have proposed, and they're going to have to come in and tell us what sort of materials they're going to use on the, on the structures. Landscaping is, we talk about no cutting of trees, the preservation of the trees shown on the plan, the protective measures for trees to be preserved, to protect them during the construction period. There will be a construction management plan, which is going to, which is going to cover all kinds of things, mandatory provisions for site access, hours of operation, deliveries, noise control, dust control, sequencing of activities, anticipated completion, and all of such matters. And this will be worked out between the developer, the DPW director, and the town planner. The landscaping plan, we have a landscaping plan, we're going to get a supplemental landscaping plan to show in detail how they're going to make this development tie in with the rest of the Brushwood development. It's going to be landscaped similarly. No clear cutting. And that?
That's it.
Those are the provisions, and I think it should be a good project.
Any questions from board members? Yes, Brian?
Two questions. One is the title sheet references Kikod Berme, and I don't see other, I don't see any other specification in the plans. I didn't see this.
If you look under driveway...
But I did see that there was, I was going to say, I saw Alex has made a provision for granite curving. I just wanted to point out that inconsistency.
Yep.
Right.
So I think Alex's permit covers it, but I just wanted to make sure we were aware there was a plan inconsistency. And I do have a question on Sheet 2. This talks about the trees that are to be preserved in accordance with Sheet 2. And I just wanted to clarify what the, the highlighted sections, highlighted trees we're referring to, there's no key on here, so...
Well, they have the, they have the inch...
I'm missing it?
They have the caliber.
I understand that. So just, just the areas around the houses where they're bubbling out the trees? Are those trees to be removed? Am I missing a key?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think...
Trees to be removed? Okay, I see. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. I didn't see the note.
Mike, any questions?
Nope.
So on the construction management plan, once that is done, will it be on file in the planning office? Okay, so anybody who has any questions on the construction management plan would contact you. We did have one resident ask that the abutters be kept informed of any construction activities. Can we make sure that the construction plan has a method of doing that? Whether we collect email addresses and it's sent out? I think we did that with 36 Central. Has their construction manager sent out, or was at least going to send out, regular emails? So can...
The lawyer did that.
The lawyer did that. Okay, so can, when, when you get together with the developer and the DPW director, make sure that there's a provision for informing people of major construction activities or changes? That would be the other thing, if they come to us for any changes, that the neighborhood is also informed that that will happen. So, yes. Let's all head up.
Thank you, Mayor Chair Jeff Wilkinson, 199 Beacon Street. Just for the sake of clarity, I wonder if you could say a little bit more about the trees? I'm concerned there may not be a clear understanding among some of the neighbors. My, my understanding and looking at the, at Page 2, it appears there's at least one tree at the end of Beacon Street that may be cut for the, for the tie-in, but I'm not sure I'm reading that right. But I remember, I mean, in, in communication with Mr. Whiteside, my understanding was that it might be required that a tree might have to come down as they tie into that water main. If that's the case, I think it'd be important for us to understand that this evening so that people don't walk out of here with the impression that no tree is being cut.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a very good point.
Bill, can...
Yes, Bill, if you can explain. I see the hand.
Right now, on the plan that you have, you see a 60-inch?
Yes.
That 60-inch tree has already fallen. It broke during a storm at some point, so that it's lying partially over the fence, partially into the parcel it's landed, partially onto the unbuilt portion. The plan is not to have to take down any trees. The whole plan on this whole project is to be able to potentially take the road, and if we can wiggle it to the right, wiggle it to the left, so that we can save a tree, I've already taken and discussed this.
What road?
The new drive coming in.
Oh, okay.
If we can take and wiggle that some, we're going to, to save whatever trees are there. As we take and put in the underground utility area, if we have to wiggle it to move a tree, to save a tree, we'll move it a little bit to save the tree.
Okay.
And there is a tree right in the middle of the, it isn't shown here, but there is a tree.
So we'll pull in a little bit and...
But it's right on the, right on the border, but that tree is going nowhere.
Not going anywhere.
Okay. So, so just to clarify, on this plan, you have some trees around the houses that have the little bubbles around them.
Yep.
Those are going?
Those are going.
Okay, you've got some...
Actually, some of them may even be able to stay. They're, if we can slide the house afoot to save a tree, they'll, they'll work to try to do that.
So if there's no bubble around it, the tree is staying.
The tree is going to stay.
If there is a bubble around it, it may be taken down, but we're hoping not to.
Yes.
And that is also consistent with those that are at the top end of the underground utility area. The 60-inch caliper tree is staying where it is in a fallen position, being removed from where it is? Something like that? Hang on.
That's a condo association question, not mine.
That is not a town planner question. Okay, and then there's another tree in the vicinity of that 60-inch that is not marked on the map that is staying?
We're going to make it.
Is there a...
We're not going to try, we're trying not to take down any trees whatsoever along that beach line there.
Okay. Does that answer the question about trees?
That's the guess.
Okay.
I do have one more question.
Okay, yes, fire away.
One other question on drainage, is there, I tried to see it, but I don't see a reference to an operation and maintenance manual. Is there, will there be one on file? And if there's not, we probably should have a condition for that.
Okay.
We can put that in the construction management plan.
It will be, but...
Will that, will the construction management plan survive the special, after with the special permit? It won't, right? I want, it should be a condition that goes forward.
I think we required that for the St. Pius site, didn't we, in operations and maintenance on that?
You really need it for a system of this cap.
We'll have it forwarded to the condo association.
What's that?
The operation and maintenance plan would be forwarded.
It should be on file with the town as well.
Okay.
So that's the only...
So we're going to add that to drainage?
Yes.
Okay.
You're going to add it as the...
Yes, so on drainage, which is Page 2, add as a condition that there be an operations and maintenance plan.
Which will be adhered to.
Yes, and which will be adhered to by the condo association.
Okay, so we say there...
There shall be.
Shall be an operations and maintenance plan.
Manual.
Manual or plan?
Yeah, this, this structure will probably have.
And is that self-explanatory?
I think so. It should just be on file with the building department or with the town.
And enforced by the condo association.
Operation and maintenance manual controlling drainage.
The infiltration system.
Yeah, correct.
Controlling drainage.
Infiltration system.
Controlling the infiltration system.
You're not, you're not going to have one for the pipe that runs to it?
Yeah, it's really just for the...
Make sure this doesn't gum up.
It has for, so it's only for the infiltration system?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that right, Bill?
Yes.
For the infiltration system?
Yes. I could've said stormwater management system.
Yeah, that's, I'm wondering if that's a better, sorry, Alex, but I'm wondering if you said...
You want to have a stormwater management?
Stormwater system.
Manual?
No, for the stormwater management system instead of the infiltration system.
For the stormwater...
Stormwater management system.
This, today, I could probably call it a producer's...
Storm scepter and whatnot.
For the stormwater management system.
Yes.
That's better.
And the manual shall be...
Capt on file at the planning office.
Okay.
And enforced by the condo association.
The, shall be an operation and maintenance manual for the stormwater management system and the manual with which there shall be compliance. The manual will be, with which there shall be compliance.
You're getting to see drafting and work, at work, everyone.
The manual shall be on file with the town planner.
Yes. And we need to have something about the condo association enforcing it.
I think the town should issue Alex a PC.
Okay, with which there shall be compliance by the condominium association.
Yes.
The type's low, I get to...
Shall be on file with the town planner. Is that the right place, Bill, for it, Bill?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to read this.
What number are you on?
This is at the end of three, drainage.
Thank you.
There shall be an operation or shuns?
Shun, shun.
Operation. Operation and maintenance manual for the stormwater management system with which there shall be compliance by the condominium association. The manual shall be on file with the town planner.
Excellent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other changes that anybody would like to make going through this?
Uh-uh.
All right. All right. Any other comments, questions?
Warranting, so he can replicate it.
Maybe we should give it a, okay. Are you gonna just?
I'll do it.
Okay, that's good.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the site plan approval decision that...
Has modified.
That's amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So we can sign, we're just gonna change that page. We can sign the, the last...
The last page and...
The last page, if we, if we have some last pages.
I have a last page. Do you have a last page? I don't have a blue pen though, because I think I have a blue pen.
I have a blue pen. Not sure if they're gonna be able to format it back. Do you think you can move it?
Oh, you think it'll push the format off?
No, it can...
It'll fit.
I am confident.
Confident we can squish that text down a little bit?
Change the margins.
All right, sounds good. Sounds good.
Do you have a...
I have a signature page.
You have double-sided?
I have single-sided.
Perfect. Pass that down to Mike.
Okay. Might even have a second, single-sided. Do we have three single-sided?
Eighty-three?
Don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Yep.
All right, thank you all very much for coming. We appreciate your participation. All right, we'll give everybody a few minutes to clear. And then we will start Thayer Nursery.
Yep.
Yes. Done.
All right, Thayer Nursery. So, just to recap where we are. We had begun our deliberations on the order of conditions that would be for Thayer Nursery. We have left sort of the two biggest ones, the ones that have had the most amount of public comment and back and forth on new proposals for today. And that is the fencing and the drainage. So I want to make sure that we start with those two items and work our way through. And then Tim had taken all of our comments from the last meeting and worked them into the text. So you should have a new draft order of conditions that was in your packet with the comments. So I figure after we talk about the fencing and the drainage, we can go back through. And then where I'm hoping we will get to tonight is a sense from the four of us, who are the four that can vote on this. And for those who have been watching, a special permit requires four members to vote positively. So I'm hoping at the end of the night, we either know that we are going to vote in favor or we're going to have one or more people voting against. And then I have direction from... Direction from the board to either work on a draft decision in favor with Tim or a draft decision against with Tim. So let's see where we go in our discussions on the, the drainage and the fencing. So fencing starts on page 12. It's partway down, landscaping and fencing. And what Tim did was pull from all of the different sources we received over this public hearing, the various proposals. So obviously, Thayer Nursery has made a proposal and we had a site walk of how they would do the fencing. We have also heard from the abutters as to their preference on the fencing. So Tim pulled all of that. And I think throughout this, there have been questions from members of the board too on how the fencing would go. So I'm interested to hear from you on that. And then Kay also goes over to the next page, on page 13. And then there's some comments there that Tim and I had passed back and forth on mitigation and how that would work. So have a look and give me your thoughts.
Quick point of order. I, my page numbers aren't matching yours.
Oh, maybe I pulled the wrong one. What do you have a page number for? I have the draft, says last updated September 29th by TC at the front page?
No, I don't have that.
Okay. Make sure we're all working off the same draft, so it'll say...
I'm sure I have it right here. I do have it right here.
Okay. Mike, Alex, you're working on the same draft.
I've worked from the other one, but I think it's the same. Tim is getting me out of the coffee.
Okay, great, excellent. Okay, excellent. So yeah, have a quick look and then tell me what you're thinking on this.
So we're on landscaping and fencing.
Landscaping and fencing, yes. And there were also, just to remind everyone, there were requirements in the zoning itself about landscaping and fencing. So whatever we approve should be consistent with that. Or if we're waiving any of that for any reason, we need to make a note of why we're, we're waiving it.
Are we gonna try to do that comparison relationship right here?
We can do. Or you can let me know what you're thinking. We can come to an agreement and then I can go back and just double-check. I'm, I've got the zoning in front of me, so...
Well, I mean, there's no requirement for a fence.
There's requirement for landscaping. So it says, you're correct that the fence, there's no requirement for a fence, but it says fences and walls, it says specifications, and this is E. Let me tell you which number E, so we all know.
Four.
Four E, thank you. Specifications for all fences, walls, and sound buffering landscape structures shall be part of this plan. Fences and walls shall be at least 15 feet from lot lines and landscaping shall at a minimum be provided in the area within 30 feet of lot lines. And goes on to talk about the position of the driveway. So again, it doesn't say you have to have a fence, but if you do have a fence, this is where it has to be located, so...
And at the beginning, it says that fences have to be appropriately sited and incorporated into attractive setting and landscape with vegetation on both sides.
Yes, thank you.
Well, I'm prepared to offer a few thoughts.
Please, go ahead.
It seems to me that the critical elements of this plan, thank you, are the fence and the drainage. And I think that the fence is critical for, for noise. And it has to be, it has to be sited to best minimize the noise. And I'm a little unclear. I mean, I, I, it was initially, there was sort of a thought of a 10-foot fence on top of a wall, which was at the bottom of a one- or two-foot grade. And it seemed to me that when they came back and said an eight-foot fence should do it, then an eight-foot fence would be fine if it were on top of the grade running down to the wall. Because you, you basically get an extra foot or two right there. And that's sort of where that line of evergreen trees is.
You're talking about the rear property line at this point?
Rear property line. I mean, the, the Lepore line is, is more or less a, a level, a level. I mean, there is no, there's no grade.
There's no, yeah, there's no significant, right.
There's no grade. I, I, the specifications for the fence with the knotted wire that they talk about seems, seems okay. The question is the sound buffering material. If you put a, unless, without the sound buffering material, you might as well just put in a six-foot fence. If the, if the sound buffering is only six feet high, what's the point of having an, you know, an extra two feet of opening other than to keep the deer from making them jump a little higher? And it does seem to me that if we're talking about an eight-foot fence, we really need to, we really need to get that sound buffering up to the top of it.
So you have a comment, Bill, on that?
The last time they talked about fence, they said they were going to put up the eight-foot fence with eight feet of sound attenuating material. It comes in four and a half-quid rolls.
Yeah, well, they talked about it. They said they could do it one of two different orientations. They could do eight feet with one on the top, one in the middle. They could do, they could do a six-foot-high run.
With two feet at the bottom.
There was, there was recommending the six-foot run based on their...
They came back at one of the last meetings and said that there was a, they found a material that they can use that actually has, it's the same stuff. They just have, it comes in a roll that's four and a half feet by whatever the thing is long. So they're going to have a pole at the, you're gonna have the, the posts. You're gonna have a pipe going between those at the top and there'll be another one in the middle. So they'll take one four-and-a-half-foot sheet, start it from the ground to the four-and-a-half-foot part, mark. They'll take the other one from the top and it'll come down. So you've got two four-and-a-half-foot sheets overlapping. So there's a six-inch overlap on both sheets.
So it'd be, it would end up being the eight feet?
Eight feet with an overlap.
May I, so I had the same question. My question on this all was the orientation of the sound attenuation, because I had the same question that Alex did. So if you're getting eight feet of coverage...
I know that we talked about that because we said they were going to take input, they were going to screw it to the posts, the wooden posts. And there's a plastic washer that goes into it to hold it in place. By having the flap there, it actually lets the air out, so it doesn't become a sail.
Which was a concern that we'd had on earlier conversations, that we didn't want it becoming a sail, so...
So it's, it's overlapping itself. So if the sound hitting the flap, it's dying in the flap and going down anyways.
And I think that the fact that even though you could have a nine-foot fence, it does seem to me if you're putting four feet into the ground, they, they don't make these things in 13-feet foot lengths. And what...
The posts.
Right. Yeah, and the other, I, I, if you're going to have two panels, then I think they should overlap. Because otherwise, you run the risk of having one panel going one, I don't think the sound would, would work. I think you'd have the, the gap happen. If you, if you try and do exactly four-and-a-half feet to exactly four-and-a-half feet to make a nine-foot fence, it's not gonna work.
The reason they were avoiding with the other rule, they were avoiding running six, you know, the sections was they were trying to minimize the number of seams.
Right, exactly. And having a continuous roll makes...
You have a seam, but it's overlapped, which is, I'm not speaking as an expert. I'm guessing, I'm interpreting the way you're saying it.
Same thing, yeah, exactly. Not speaking as an expert, but just using common sense. You know, butting it up is not gonna work as well. Yeah, exactly.
This has to be rewritten to incorporate that.
Right, it would be, so. So then what I'm hearing is that, starting at least on the side property line, the one that abuts up to the Lepore property line, we're looking at that eight-foot-high steel fence with the overlapping four-and-a-half, four-and-a-half. Does that sound right? Okay, so then we turn the corner and now we're talking about the rear property line.
Landscape on both sides.
Landscape on both sides, yes, exactly, as per the zoning. So then we've turned the corner and now we're talking about the rear property line. We've got the corner turned. We're going along the Tivens line. My understanding was the proposal again was same eight-foot fence at this point, running along the overlap. Then we come to that berm as we come up to the Joe Henning Row property line. And the idea, as I understand it, is the fence goes up on top of the berm. So it is now, it's still an eight-foot fence, but it's another, was it a foot and a half high? Another two feet high on that berm? I thought it was a foot and a half.
The topography there runs downhill.
And it runs down. So you've got the berm, you had that swale, and then the topography itself is running down, so...
So the...
The fence is staying, yes, the same level.
The stone wall is at 182.
Okay.
And about two, I can't, I don't have the scale, but then it pretty quickly goes to 184, probably, I would say, within two to 10 feet of the, of the wall and then gets up to 186 and then stays pretty consistent at 186.
So that eight-foot fence is running along the top of the stone wall. Is that consistent with what you all understood as a proposal?
On top of the embankment, which is above the stone wall. The stone wall...
Embankment above, thank you.
The stone wall, I mean, if they build up the stone wall two feet to bring it to grade.
Right.
But I don't think they want to do that. I think they do.
They told us we're out there walking.
The base of the, the base of the hemlocks is the, is the top of the wall.
It isn't the top of the wall now.
It's going to be.
And they're gonna put...
The same elevation number.
Well, let's just think about this. They're gonna put the post into a wall?
Behind the wall.
On the Thayer side of the wall, not the Joe Henning Row side of the wall.
So they're gonna build a retaining...
They're putting it closer to the...
They're gonna build a retaining wall.
Yes. No, the wall is already there. They're making the wall two feet higher. It's gonna be one foot up to two feet. It's, it's the same elevation as the bottom of the hemlocks is now.
Right, right. Which is the elevation that it should be on. But it's, it's gotta be high. I, I mean, if they really want to build, do they really want to build this wall?
Well, I guess, yeah, what he's...
No.
So what you're saying is you're gonna be at 184.
Yes.
With the, with the, with the top of the wall.
Yes.
That's what the hemlocks are at now, is at 184.
Okay, so the, the wall will be built up?
Makes the wall go up about two feet in the middle, right?
That's right.
Okay.
And if this, I mean, if you put it, if you put these posts right next to the wall, it's going to not be a very structurally, it's going to weaken the structure. Because there's going to be no, the wall is going to be all that's holding the fence up.
So then how, how are the posts going to...
Grab.
Grab.
They're going to be cemented in place. Those posts are being cemented in place. You're going to put up the wall, you're gonna backfill the wall. The area that you just backfilled, you're going to take and dig out the postal. You're gonna put in your post. I don't care if you compact it or you put cement in it. That's how a fence stands up anyways.
Well, often, you know, the surrounding ground supports the post. And that's the only question I have, is, is when you build up this retaining wall, it's going to be a retaining wall because it's going to be filled in back of it, that when the wind blows, it's gonna...
I understand the question.
It's gonna want to kick out the, kick out the wall.
It's, I mean, I see...
But Mike shakes his head. And if you shake your head, Mike, that's good enough for me.
You mushroom the thing so it doesn't kick.
Okay, so we're gonna have the wall built up.
Unless the wall is pretty...
So the top of the wall is at 184 the whole way along. It's gonna be backfilled on the Thayer side. Posts are going into the backfill, being cemented in. So the bottom of the fence is at 184 all along and then it's eight feet high from there.
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Yes.
All right. So then, how does the board feel about that?
The bottom of the fence is at 184.
Bottom of the fence is at 184. And we should specify that, actually. That's a good specification.
Plus or minus?
No, no, you don't do plus or minus.
One inch, I mean. Well, I, I, no. People are raised in years and they say 14.
Yeah, you have to, you have to plus or minus. Tell us what your plus or minus is saying, yes. 184, eight feet high. So then the fence itself is the same treatment going along both property lines. So now where are we ending the fence? We've started at...
I had a question about that as well. So right now, we're ending it at the, or no, I'm sorry. We have a gate, we have a gate going at the existing willow tree.
Yes.
I'd rather not, is, to the extent possible, let's be careful about the existing willow tree or using references to trees. I'm not even sure if that existing willow tree isn't still wrapped, so...
Right.
I just wanna make sure we all are living with something, including the applicant, that we can rely on.
And obviously, the plan, we have to make sure that the plans that are submitted with, oh, did you just say that? The plans have to reflect exactly what we're placing it, yes. So that will be on there. But it is not going... But it is not going a lot... It's stopping at the corner of Joe Henning Row and not going past the Cole property, because as I remember, the Coles did not want the fence. That's your memory as well.
They have a fence. They don't need the sound attenuating material.
That's already exists there.
All right, so, good.
They have vegetation.
Okay.
Do we want to have it go 10 feet beyond that along the Cole line?
Will it make... Will it either be effective that way? Or you think it would make it more effective that way? Are you thinking there might be an overlap with the Cole fence? What's the...
No, I mean, I'm just thinking about noise in that area.
You're talking about the material? Overlapping the material onto the Cole fence?
Well, no, just overlapping the border a little bit and going 10 feet beyond the Rojo Henning line.
Isn't it parallel, and then at the line, it...
Turns in.
It turns in.
Turns in perpendicular.
Turns in perpendicular?
So like, the fence doesn't end, just ends?
The fence doesn't end?
Turns in, and there's a gate.
And then there's a gate. So the fence is actually perpendicular to the property line.
So it turns in...
At the property line.
Towards the nursery.
Towards the property line?
Yep.
Right here, Alex.
Okay, so there will be sound attenuation...
All the way up to the...
With a gate.
Right, yes, the gate has attenuation on it.
That's what was described to us in the walk. And there's gonna be a gate here.
I remember seeing that, yeah.
And is the gate going to have sound attenuation material on it?
Yes, all right, so...
That's noted here, Emily.
Tim, you're also keeping notes on these, right?
Of course. If you did... If you pushed it 10 feet further down...
It's going to look odd.
All right. Well, it's gonna look the same as it looks now. I mean, no one knows where the line is, do they?
Sure.
Well, I understand that Joe Henning's doing the Roseville, but no one else does.
There's a fence in that proximity anyways.
Looks like there's a deer fence right there, too, Alex. I don't know.
I was just...
A fence there.
If you don't think that's needed, that's okay.
Well, Tim and I can write this up as we've been talking about it and as we think between now and the next meeting. We can always consider whether or not we want to extend that.
I don't know if it's the case, but you could also consider the fact that if the neighbors, the Coles, decided they didn't want an eight-foot black-sheeted fence in their backyard, then that's...
Then they may not want it extended.
I wouldn't want to force on them.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, part of this has been to make sure that we consider the...
Let's do it right on the line.
Okay. All right, so anything else on the fence? We have the materials. We have the height. We have the position. We have the fact that there needs to be landscaping on both sides, which is more important for the Lepori boundary, because that currently doesn't. Anything else we're missing on the fence?
Well, we've got the upkeep of the fence. And we need Bill to tell us what this stuff is that they're going to use on it.
Right.
And we should look at the specs on it, Bill, at our next meeting.
Sound attenuating stuff?
Yeah, we need the...
It's in the application.
It is, but it's a reminder that we need to actually put that into the special permit.
It's the stuff?
It's the same stuff that Tina Tevens brought forward.
Yeah.
Okay, this is the Teven stuff?
Right, yes. Yes, which is very helpful.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So that is the fence. And I think between Tim and myself, we've got the ability to write that up. The next page talks about the Norway spruces, the height of those, and the arborvidai, the height of those that will be planted on either side of the fence on the Lepori side. So we've got 13 Norway spruces, 10 to 12 feet. That's on the Lepori side of the fence. And then the 11 arborvidai between 10 and 12 on the landcare side of the fence. So... And then we've got the eight and...
Work those in between them.
That's the fences between them.
I understand between the trees.
Oh, between the trees. I'm assuming they'd be growing together as a hedge. Should we want something else between the trees?
16 feet?
Or you think...
How long will that... Okay, they should join.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I would say so.
Okay.
And then eight evergreens along the Cole property.
How big do Norway spruces get?
Good question. How big do Norway spruces get?
60 feet.
The diameter?
60 feet they could get?
Oh, diameter wise, 30.
Yes. I was gonna say, mine is at least 60, and it's over 20.
Does it stay at the ground, the coverage?
Yep.
You can also keep it trimmed to...
Okay.
If you top it off, it'll stay near the ground as I'm finding out to my cost with my hemlocks.
Do we want it topped off? Should it be topped off?
It'll stay thicker at the ground if you top it off after a couple of years, potentially. I mean, okay, that's a guess based on hemlocks. I should not speak on things I don't notice. I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed. So, yes, they're the applicant. They have standing, and we are asking them specific questions.
How close to Forest Street the fence goes?
That's all. I just... Because you're talking about the Cole extension, so how close it is to Forest.
Those are... We walked out there.
We had actually not yet covered that point, so I'll accept that. So we had talked about the ending of the fence along the rear property line. We did not yet talk about the beginning of the fence along the side property line.
So it's written here that it would be right after the rock outcropping.
25 feet in for parts.
25 feet in from Forest. That's what I remembered as well, so...
The big rock in there.
Right, there was a barrier that we seen out there that kind of excluded you from going any further.
Great, okay, so 25 feet in from Forest. And the height of the Norway spruces, if they're topped off? If they top off, will they stay thicker at the bottom?
Um, they generally stay thick at the bottom.
Anyway, okay. So even if they get... Because I know some of the trees, as they grow up, they're losing.
Yeah, they're not like a pine or anything like that.
Okay.
A good point of reference would be the corner of School Street and Randolph Baptist. I'll stand right by the church there if you want to take a view like that. That's a good point to look at.
Good, thank you. Anything else on fence or landscaping? Okay, in that case, let's move on to drainage. We can always come back.
Okay.
Yes.
What are we doing along the other... That's the Lepori thing? Or is this along the whole thing?
The Norway spruces and the arborvidai along the Lepori, because that doesn't currently have planting. The rear has...
And what about the Rojo Henning Cole...
So Cole has the...
Landscaping. What's happening there?
Cole, we have a statement that they're going to do eight evergreens, spot-sided, and that it's going to be a mix of arborvidai, white pine, and Norway spruce. Along Tevens and Joe Henning, as you know from the site walk... Joe Henning Row, sorry. As you know from the site walk, there is existing vegetation. Do we wish to require more vegetation around that?
That's the berm.
Yeah. It's a good point, Alex.
There was some discussion about what the treatment of the berm was gonna be while we were on site, whether it was gonna be crushed gravel, whether it be grass.
Yeah. And that goes into our drainage discussion as well, because that came up at the last meeting.
Probably, certainly, you could... You really can't put much in there that's gonna have any height, I don't think. But, you know, you could put blueberry bushes or something in there. I would guess those are... Those can treat the water. That's not gonna do much for screening.
Well, I think there's two questions. There's the treatment of the water, but there's also the mitigation of the eight-foot-high black fence now. So do we think that there's sufficient vegetation on both sides of the fence along that rear property line? Or do you think we should require more to shield that fence, especially on the Abutter side?
It was quite thick the day we were out there. I don't recall if it's deciduous or not.
I think it's a mix, if I remember correctly. There's some evergreen, but it's mixed. What do you think?
I think that we probably should send a qualified person to take a look.
Okay. Would you define either the town planner or the assistant town planner as a qualified person who could have a look at that?
I thought we might send Cheryl out there.
Okay, I will check. I just... The only reason I made a face is I'm not sure what Cheryl's schedule is, but let me ask her.
See if she could... I mean, I would... I think that she might have some good ideas.
Yeah, I think she would.
I think she's back.
Just keep in mind that apparently, there's gonna be the fence.
Yes.
The wall directly adjacent to the fence. Below the wall is gonna be the swale.
Swale, sorry.
Which we don't want to interrupt.
Yeah.
So any planting would have to be probably 12, 15 feet.
But be along the lot line.
It's gonna have to be right along the lot line.
Close.
Well, what I'm thinking, too, is because there's already vegetation, it's gonna be... It would be spot-sided within that. It may not be an even barrier, obviously.
My last understanding was the fence behind the Joe Henning Row property would be 30 feet from the lot line.
Yes.
So I'm just visualizing that fence, wall, swale, 15, 20 feet. You still probably have at least 10 feet between the upside of the swale and the property line.
Right. Well, I will send the... I'll send an email to Cheryl and ask her if she'd mind taking a look.
Likely similar language to what's going on at Cole. You know, spot-sided, planted to increase density of existing established berm. You could actually reference, you know, and...
Same materials, yes.
To fill in where there's deciduous material or something.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. And if it's the same materials, then that's perfect. So along Joe Henning Row and Tevens, yes.
Could we suggest that somebody from there walk it with her?
Walk it with... Yeah, I think that would make sense.
See what is doable, what's intelligent to put there.
Yeah.
Well, it does seem to me if we have their walking, we probably should have some of the Abutters there also. I think she should just take a look at it.
Okay, make it less formal.
Something we just don't...
All right. Okay, anything else on landscaping or fences? All right, and obviously, the purpose of this is to... Primarily to mitigate the noise, also the dust that we saw in the video. And of course, the landscaping will help with both the noise and shielding the look of the fence itself. So the... I'm assuming that the black of the sound attenuating barrier is just gonna disappear among the trees. So that will help with the visual aspect for everyone. All right, drainage. I think this will be our most challenging discussion. So what you see in here is the text from the Stormwater Operation and Maintenance Plan that Thayer Nursery had submitted in one of its additional materials submissions. We've heard from both their engineer and from the two of the Abutters, Mr. Joe Henning and Mr. Rowe, had hired an engineer. And we've heard from both of them. And it seemed like at the last meeting, they were mostly in agreement with one or two points where they agreed to disagree, I think. We've had an updated site plan for the drainage. Any thoughts, any questions?
I think for the most part, we're relying on the plan to establish what has to be in place for the drainage.
Okay.
And what were the issues? Whether maybe either Tim or Bill can tell us what the issues between the engineers are, because it is mainly an engineering question.
Yes. So do you... Either you, Bill, Tim?
There was the question of the... The applicants engineer said that a new hydroCAD modeling might affect the size or shape of the infiltration structure. And there was also an issue about the abandoning the swale on the Lepori property line. And I think there was an agreement that there was gonna be some sort of either dam or some sort of structure or process by which, you know, that wouldn't cause an issue.
A dam where?
Clay dam.
What?
A clay dam at the end of the abandoned swale, which is along the Lepori property. We saw it on the site walk. It's just a gravel run.
Eastern property, eastern boundary.
Yeah, they were gonna put a clay dam at the... That would then be the northern end of it to prevent water from running through.
And then there's gonna be a pipe. There's gonna be a pipe?
Doesn't need a pipe. What they're saying is that it's not doing anything.
They abandoned the whole concept.
Right.
Yeah, that's what they started out at the very beginning Yeah, that's what they started out at the very beginning of the public hearing.
It's not holding any water now.
Exactly. It's not doing anything at all.
But if it does hold water, they want to make sure it doesn't run.
So why do they want a dam?
Belt and suspenders.
Mr. Giuliano wanted some kind of-
He wants a dam.
Stop to it.
Okay.
In case it ever, in case it ever holds water, it keeps the water from running.
And then where is it going to go when it hits the dam?
It'll just infiltrate down.
Go off to the left?
It'll infiltrate down.
Yeah, it'll, it'll go across the Thayer property.
So the dam is going to be sort of a horseshoe type thing?
Just clay in the rock.
But, so you think it would sheet off as opposed to infiltrate?
Well, some of it will infiltrate in the stone they've already put there.
Oh, I see. The water that goes to the dam, I see would just, I see, yes, yes.
If it filled those rocks, then it would sheet.
I mean, the whole-
And then go to the swell.
The whole idea is that there's all those plants in there anyways, so the plants are going to wind up taking it up anyhow.
The property line-
Flat.
The contours run back into Thayer Nursery.
Right, so it'll just sheet back into there and go into the swell.
So now, since there is an engineering question, I think one of the things that we've certainly done in the past is required that as the construction is done and changes, you know, as they make changes during the construction, they need to come back to us. We also should remember that we have, on this particular special permit, we have the ability to, in fact, it states in the zoning that we will do it for a shorter period of time and then it's renewable. So as part of our review, as we put that language in there, we should think about if the drainage doesn't work for some reason, how do we want to call in and address the, and make sure that, you know, it is then changed to work? And I think that might be the best way of solving that is saying, okay, you've put everything in according to your plan. In X amount of time, it doesn't work, you know, we're seeing that it doesn't work. We're hearing reports that it doesn't work. You need to come back and tell us how you're going to address that. Might be the way of doing this. So, yes.
I think Mr. Burke also made the statement that he was going to acquiesce and make the suggested changes by the engine, by Mr. Giuliano.
With regard to the chamber.
Again, when he keeps, when he keeps saying remodeling.
He was talking about the size of the pipe, the orientation of the pipe, and the size of the orifice.
Yes.
He said he would, he'll, he figured that, you know, you know, a little bit more, fine, he'll do it. If he wants it more, he'll give it more.
Yeah, he basically said he'd run it according to the flows that he, that were being requested.
He ran, he ran his numbers and came up with this. He designed it that way. He wants to run it the other way and he wants to change it a little bit. He didn't think that by making that change, it was going to exacerbate the situation. He said he'd do it.
Mike, you had something you were saying on modeling?
No, I think it was said pretty much was, I was having.
All right.
So does that-
I just didn't want people to get, I think early on, they were getting the concept that remodeling meant you're going to rebuild it some different way.
Right, exactly.
It's just, they're talking numbers. They mean, you put different numbers.
Right. And I think that, I think the clear thing is that we need to have some means of saying, great, you've built it. It's been tested over a period of time, and it's not working, and you need to fix it. And if it is working, that's fantastic, you know, it's done. But if it's not working, we need to have some sort of provision for review into this, into this.
What, what is the modeling that Mr. Giuliano wants done at some point?
What's the what?
The modeling.
The different numbers he wanted to be.
He wants some different numbers. What, what was it that he wanted him?
HydroCAD is the program that they use to sort of estimate and sort of model.
It's a computer program.
So it's just a matter of, you know.
He came up with one.
You put stuff into it and it shoots out whether or not-
Right.
Right, and that'll tell you that-
It works. And he wants different numbers put into it. And what are the numbers he wants put into it?
I don't know what those numbers are, but I know what the outcome of it, of those numbers are.
How do you know that?
Because Burke agreed to a-
To use those numbers.
They're both using the same program. One came up with a number that wasn't overly far away. He said, fine, I'll do it your way. You want to have it that way? We'll make it that way.
So it doesn't have to be remodeled, because he's already-
He's already agreed.
Any other outstanding issues between the engineers?
I think those were the two biggies.
Well, and I think that, I mean, we're not, Mike, do you have a-
No, again, yeah, yeah, when you say, when you say it doesn't have to remodel it, he is remodeling. He's using different numbers, but-
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I don't like to put words and thoughts in people's minds or mouths, but as best I recall, even the other engineer, Mr. Giuliano, I think kind of, it's hard to say, admit it, but I think he conceded that it probably won't make a real significant difference.
It'll be just, it'll be modeled, it'll be modeled correctly in his mind, and so they agreed to do it that way.
Right.
That way, everybody feels good about it. I think it gives a better report from everybody's standpoint.
And I think that's what Burke said, fine.
So that's great, right.
Anything else on drainage, then?
To your point, I mean, I think that's the harder question to answer. I mean, is it a bond? Is it a, is it a callback? I mean, I, I'm not sure how you, how do we draft it other than it's just something that we're going to look at when we review.
Well, I think the question for the board becomes, and I'm not expecting that we're going to be able to answer this tonight, is do, do we make provision to call them back earlier for the drainage, given what a, you know, we have to allow enough time for the full improvements to be installed. We have to allow enough time for it to be clear whether or not it's working on a regular basis. So do we say, okay, we're going to grant the special permit for however long we're going to grant it, and we'll review everything when you come in for that final, that renewal? Or do we make a provision for certain things, like the drainage, where if there's clear evidence that it's not working, you need to come in earlier and talk to us? And that's something we need to-
So a possible condition could be that they have to submit drainage. We need to get a, a report on the status of the drainage six months and 12 months after completion of the construction. That any deficiencies identified on the report must be corrected.
Okay.
And, and I think that the, the sort of bottom line is when the permit comes up for renewal,
Yeah.
the question before the board will be, has there been material compliance with the prior permit?
Right.
And it does seem to me that if they say, we put in drainage that doesn't work, I, I, I think that there needs to be, we've got to look and see if it works. And if it doesn't work, it has got to be addressed so that when it comes up for renewal,
It's addressed.
there presumably will be a functioning drainage system.
It's a long time to wait for renewal when water's pouring into your pool or your basement, so.
Well, I like the six month after construction, because that, that's an immediate, you know, that gives it time to be installed. It gives it time to find out whether or not it's working over a range of potential storms. I mean, you don't want to install it, then there's a dry season, and you don't find out.
Well, I think that's why you need to have six and 12, though, because you need to capture, you know, and I think we probably need to say that we're not going to, one of, any time, one of those periods can't be frozen. So it needs to be, you know, maybe the timing needs to be worked out with the planning office as well.
One thing on the review of how it's working.
Yes.
Unless Mike wants to go out and check to see how it's working, someone's got to do it. I'm sure the-
Mike volunteered. I'm pretty sure he did on a weekly basis.
I mean, someone's got to go out and, and make an objective decision. And it shouldn't be Thayer saying it's working like a charm.
Yeah, it's got to be an engineer.
And it probably shouldn't be the abutters who say it's not working.
It's to be an engineer. It has to be an engineer.
Service party engineer, yeah, okay.
Sorry, I thought I said that. Yeah.
If we do that, we shouldn't have him working all the time. In other words, it seems to me that maybe a year, a yearly.
Because when you say, does it work or not, that's, that's kind of subjective. I mean, it's not going to make everything dry.
Well, no, 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 I understand that. I, I should have said work as-
No, no, you didn't say anything wrong. I'm just saying it's-
No, that's a good point.
What's the test? What should you look for? I mean-
And it's improved.
Smiling neighbors is, is one thing.
We all, we always like that, but I think there's, yeah, I think to, there must be an industry standard before.
The report says, I, I think the report says that it's going to accommodate storms of 25, 50, 100 years. If it's a thousand-year storm, it's probably going to-
It's meeting the standards as designed.
There's still going to be rain.
There's still going to be rain, and theoretically, it's going to contain that rain within the property of Thayer unless it's above a hundred-year storm.
Well, and that's the thing, is the, the, to all of your points and to what Bill just said, it's being designed to a certain standard. And we have been told that this standard will address the issues as outlined in the report. So what we want to know in six months and then 12 months is, is it working to the standards that it was designed for? And then is that enough?
So the challenge is, that's easy to do with traffic.
Right.
This is what I proposed, and I was using a traffic condition in my head when I proposed it. How do you determine when to measure it? If you go out on a dry sunny day, it's going to look like it's working really well. If it's a 25-year storm, it'll probably be working fine, so.
If it's a category five hurricane, it's going to be difficult to get out there in the first place.
The only thing I think you could see is, if you went out there and you seen running water that was coming from Thayer Nursery onto another property.
Right.
I mean, that's, otherwise, if I go out there and it's pouring out, and I go to the guy next door's house and he's got a puddle on his backyard, that doesn't mean-
I agree.
Right, 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 understood.
It didn't do its job, and it's caused the puddle.
So it may just be a reporting issue, that it needs to be, the abutters have reported to the building inspector that there needs to, they need to address deficiencies.
Well, there's also the issue of the flow into the town system as well. And I think that's something else that we can rely on, is if that's not working, the town is going to tell us about it, too.
That'd be a backup, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So, all right, so then we need to-
They even created that ponding area down there.
Right.
To help, it'd be backup.
The, the ultimate answer is, it's helping a situation.
Right.
It's going to improve a situation. It is not going to take the situation completely away. If you have a, if you have a major rainstorm, you're, you're getting X amount of water going over the wall, but you're not getting, you're not getting the pollutant slug over the wall. That's already been captured by this system. So that the water that is escaping is already cleaner than the first slug. The pollutants all come in the first slug of water, and that gets picked up by this system. So regardless of how much water sheds off of the site, it's, the first slug is the one that's being picked up by this system. And that goes back to your standards. The standards are, can this system handle the one-year, the five-year, the 10-year, the 25? Yes, it can. Can it handle the 500? No, it cannot.
But very few things can handle a 500, yeah.
Exactly. But it's, it starts by taking care of that one through 100 and putting it into the system. Anything that comes out afterwards, it was going to come out anyways.
But it's designed, and it's designed to overflow at the northeast corner of the site, correct?
So the water, the water that's going to be hitting the town system is cleaner than it is right now.
Understood. But what I'm saying is, if it overflows into the, into the northeast corner, at what point should it, if it starts overflowing into the neighbors, which is really the primary concern.
Right.
That's a, that's probably a sort, that's probably a note, that probably is going to indicate failure, correct, Mike? Because you've now overflowed, now you've, now you've, the overcapacity is supposed to go into the town system. If it's now going in someone's backyard, you're really-
You'll see it backing up.
You created.
I understand. It's to divert that, so I guess-
Because of elevations, it's not allowed to go back uphill.
Understood. So my point is, that's the test. That's the test. If you're getting water.
Well, then I think that actually works out well, because if we've got evidence that it's going back up into the abutters' property, it's not, the, the design is not supposed to allow that. So what, question number one, is it backing up into the abutters' property? Then question number two becomes, what are the rain conditions that created that backup? It's easy enough to get the precipitation data, so if we have, and it's easy enough to get a picture on a certain date. So if we have a picture from the abutters that said, hey, look, the water's backing up onto my property. This is an issue. We look at the precipitation data for that date and see that it is a five-year storm, we've got a real problem. We look at the precipitation and find out it was a category five hurricane, well then, and I realize that's an extreme, that's why I'm using it, then we know that no system is going to be able to deal with category five hurricane.
But you can rely on the system being designed to handle it.
I can play devil's advocate on that same question. If you have, you have that five-year storm.
Yeah.
And you see that the, that the system is flowing correctly, but the neighbors have a puddle in their yard, it doesn't necessarily mean it came from the system, because the system isn't working.
You're, you're going to have people taking pictures of water coming pouring over the property line.
And a standout, but that's what I'm saying. So it's not a case of, you need to see, you need to be able to see practically how that water is potentially getting there.
Of course. You need to see the overflow.
Well, I have a puddle. That puddle, it's raining here, it's raining here. The puddles are going to be everywhere.
You need evidence of the overflow.
Thank you.
All right. So then, what I need is, because I am not a stormwater engineer, any technical information that would help me be specific about what needs to go into a draft special permit, if that's where we are at the end of the night. So just think about language and forward it over to Tim. Bill, I'll probably be talking to you directly as well, so. All right, anything else on drainage? I think, I mean, I think I'm getting a sense of, of what we need to do. Do we want to, are you wanting to go back through and check through the comments that Tim captured from our last meeting to see if there's anything more that you want to add or correct in there? You'll see it's the shaded language in there.
What have we done about ours?
So Tim sent out, and I just had it here, a spreadsheet of ours. Tim, do you have it in front of you? Do you want to go through it?
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, so I've got it, I've got it with me. He's got the Colter landscaping hours and the Eagle Farms landscaping hours. So Colter, and this was a special permit that we had done. Their greenhouse business was Monday through Friday, nine to six, same for Saturday, and Sunday was nine to five. Holiday sales, eight to nine, Monday through Friday, same for Saturday, and same for Sunday. Landscaping business can operate on Monday through Friday, eight to six, Saturday, eight to five, and Sunday, nine to five, and dumpsters, ten to two. For Eagle Farms, the use of bobcats and chainsaws is limited to ending at 9:00 PM on Friday, Monday through Friday and Saturday, Sunday, 12 to nine. There's no opening time, Monday through Friday or Saturday. And deliveries, there's no restrictions, Monday through Friday or Saturday, but Sunday, oh, they can't start until 10:30. There's no close on Saturday. Tim, what's the, did you have the date of the Eagle Farms special per, and that was a ZBA, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just wondering out of curiosity when it was issued, but that's just pure curiosity. It really doesn't have any-
It was relatively recently.
Yeah, so, okay.
Within the past couple of years.
And then Colter, of course, was our own a couple of years ago, so.
So Eagle Farms can operate until 9:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's no opening time?
No opening time. So now, remember, the hours are restricted in the zoning for Thayer, but they have requested, it gives the board the discretion to allow that one hour earlier opening time. And so that, they, of course, being a business, have requested that one hour earlier opening time. So the question for us is whether or not we wish to allow it.
The one hour being seven to eight, Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
Was there an earlier opening on Saturday or Sunday?
It's eight on Saturday. So it's seven, the, so the sales office, seven to six, Monday through Friday, nine to six.
Monday through Saturday.
I mean, Monday, no, it's because it's nine to six on Saturday.
No, that's Sunday.
Oh, then this is missed type.
It's Monday through Saturday, seven to six.
Okay, sales office.
That's sales.
Yes.
And then loading and noisy equipment is different.
Yes, eight to six is-
Eight to six.
The seven is the earlier start time that they requested. It's eight to six in the zoning with the option of going the one hour earlier. Then Saturday-
Seven E.
It's nine to five with the earlier request for the eight.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, start. And then Sunday, not allowed for the landscaping business. For nursery sales, it's 10 to three.
Look at seven E.
Seven E, okay.
Such loading and use of noisy equipment may only occur between the hours of seven and six, Monday through Friday, and the hours of eight to five on Saturday.
Oh, I'm still on four. Hang on, hang on, hang on.
No loading or use of noisy equipment on Sundays.
Seven E. Now, there was, which one are you looking at? Are you looking at the-
Seven E.
No. Are you looking at the one that was in the warrant, or are you looking at the change? Because this was what was changed at town meeting. So if you look at the voting, it's such loading and noise, use of noisy equipment may occur only between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM on Saturday, unless an earlier start of no more than one hour is shown to be reasonably necessary for the operations of the landscaping business.
If you look at your 2001 permit under 1F, it says, "Thayer shall not operate or utilize bobcats except for emergency circumstances, one on Monday through Friday inclusive before 8:00 AM or after 6:00 PM, on Saturdays and Sundays before 9:00 AM and not after 6:00 PM." That's the 2001 permit.
1F, yep. Got it here. So do we want to be consistent with the 2001 permit?
Well, I mean, that permit is still in effect.
Yeah.
So.
For the nursery, rather than for the landscaping, but yes. Although it's bobcats in general, so.
It says that, "Shall not operate or utilize bobcats," I mean.
8:00 AM to six. Yep, I'm just looking that, and not after six. Okay, so, so here's a, that's a really good question for you, because our zoning for the nursery sales makes the use of bobcats more restrictive on a Sunday, where the, the 2001 decision restricts it on Sunday from nine to six, and we restrict it to 10 to three. So that's something to consider there. And then we're not allowing it at all for the landscaping business. On Saturday, that zoning decision restricts it to nine to six. We have in our zoning nine to five, but can allow earlier at eight. And then, so it's an hour difference.
Come again. Saturday, it's eight to five for loading and noisy equipment?
No, Saturday, it's nine to five, but we can allow eight to five.
Okay. Okay.
If we want.
So it's not, it's nine to five then?
It's nine to five.
With an extra hour. And Sunday is 10 to three or 11?
10 to three for nursery only.
For loading and noisy equipment?
Of nursery sales only, yeah. And then Monday through Friday, it's eight to six, with the potential for the earlier start at seven. So right now, they're limited to eight to six.
Eight to six is the sales office.
Eight to six is also the noisy equipment.
I thought you just said, I remember the sales office was seven.
So it, it-
Yeah, and sales office is-
Originally was in the zoning was seven to six, and then we changed it to eight to six with the one hour.
With the discretionary hour, yeah.
I'm not inclined to allow it on Saturday, but I'm open to hearing about, I'm open to weekdays at seven.
But you're not inclined to allow the earlier hour on Saturday, not the use of- The way you said it, I thought, you're not going to allow noisy equipment at all on Saturday. That could be interesting, okay. All right, so you're inclined to do seven to six, Monday through Friday, and then it would be nine, nine to five on Saturday, and then presumably 10 to three.
Well, that's nursery, right?
Nursery, that's nursery, but it's, it's more restrictive than what's currently allowed for nursery, although town meeting did.
Are we, are we talking about nursery?
Well, we're just talking about-
Landscape.
Loading and noisy equipment, and, and we don't have to make a differentiation, but if there is, they've got to. What happens is that if they rev up the bobcats and say, this is all nursery business, we have to have a way of, they have to, they have to justify that.
Well, I'm still, I mean, that goes back to our vehicle conversation, but I'm still inclined to numbering the bobcats and, and now you've, at least you've limited the bobcat use on Sunday to two bobcats instead of four.
So here's what it says in our zoning, three N for Sunday. It says, "There shall be no loading or use of noisy equipment on Sundays, provided that use of equipment for the loading of plant and nursery materials, which are not sold as part of landscaping services, shall be permissible between the hours of 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM on Sundays." So that's actually quite restrictive, because it's saying you can use the equipment, but only loading plant and nursery materials. The 2001 decision allows bobcats between nine and six on Sundays, so.
For nursery?
Yes, but that can be for any nursery purpose, whereas ours is limited 10 to three, loading of plant and nursery materials, not sold as part of the landscaping.
I'm confused about why we're even talking about nursery.
Right.
Because our zoning is more, because it's more restrict, it's limiting the use of noisy equipment on Sundays.
But do we have jurisdiction on it?
Well, this is, becomes a really interesting question, because our zoning is different from, and yes, we do. There's another provision in the zoning that says if there's-
More stringent.
Yeah, exactly, so.
So this, there's a crossover, so we've been very careful to stay away from nursery throughout all of our discussions, but you're telling me there's a Sunday crossover?
There's a Sunday crossover that we need to figure out how we want to deal with, is what I'm saying.
They haven't even requested anything different on Sunday.
They have not requested anything, they have requested what's allowed in the zoning for Sundays. So then we leave, which is the 10 to three.
That's requested. I thought they said nothing, or was that just?
Nothing for the landscaping.
Leave that discussion alone.
10:00 to 3:00 for the nursery. Then, we leave it, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're all aware of it.
Yeah, we do nothing for landscaping. We do no landscaping on Sunday.
The special permit applies to both landscaping and nursery.
Yes. For, for things like the hours that are specified here.
Well, now, the use of bobcat, I mean, they...
The use of bobcats, yeah.
They, they thought it was, they thought the special permit covered the landscaping business, and they were wrong. But the question is just what did the court, I mean, the court said it doesn't cover the landscaping business, but just exactly...
When you say special permit, you mean the ZBA special permit, rather than ours?
The ZBA special permit.
Okay. The, the one that we're discussing, rather, okay.
I mean, my inclination is, is regulate the landscaping business hours. Let the special permit be what it is. Stay away from the nursery word.
Okay.
And, but I do think that is going to require us to go back and figure out a way to enforce which nursery vehicles and which landscaping vehicles we're talking about here.
And that goes back to your numbering system, if you're doing...
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, which is...
What numbering system?
Where he suggests numbering the vehicles, so that if bobcats 1 and 2 were landscape only and...
And then, someone has to monitor how the vehicles are being used.
Right.
Who's going to do that? It may be, Cheryl's not here.
Well, I was going to say, since you volunteered Cheryl for the trees and Mike for the stormwater, I think you're monitoring the bobcats, Alex.
I, I, no, I mean, that's the, that's the problem.
Pick up the keys to 3 and 4 on Saturday and bring them back around.
That's the problem. I mean, I've gotten phone calls saying the bobcats are blazing, and you've got to come up right away and take a look at these things. And that's the problem, because the bobcats, and Thayer will say, "Oh, it's just nursery business, don't bother yourself."
Well, if there's more than two, if there's more than two running, and there's two that are dedicated to landscaping, and there's two that are dedicated to nursery, and they've got the running, there's something going on, there's a problem.
Well, exactly.
So, then, we're...
But someone has to determine that, and some objective person has to determine that.
Well, the problem is it's a Sunday.
I mean, how do you, this is, this gets us to the enforcement question.
I agree, it's a Sunday.
When the building inspector is at home, wherever he lives, and there's no one here to come listen to the tree fall on the forest, who's to say that it fell?
So, then, I think that brings us to our larger question of how are we going to ensure that the requirements that we put in here are in fact followed? What's the check on this? How do we know when we get to the point where we're looking at, if, if we grant a special permit on this, how do we know when we get to the point that that special permit comes up for renewal, that the conditions have been met?
Or not been met.
Or not been met, as the case may be. So, what are we going to require?
Well, we've been talking about that as we've been through here...
We have been talking about that, yes.
As far as logs and whatnot.
Yep.
On these type of issues, I mean, it's, you know, the building inspector's going to have to tell us whether or not there are complaints and whether he's been able to validate them and...
Okay.
And if there are complaints, how do we, how do we resolve them? We tell the building inspector that it's cracking?
One is you don't renew the permit.
Well, you, you don't renew it if the complaints are valid, but if there are complaints that aren't valid, then...
I hear you, so...
And someone's got to determine that, if that's the way it's going to work.
All right. So, we have logs for certain activities that we talked about in the last one.
We did talk about logs.
We did talk about logs.
About deliveries, basically.
Certified by the officer.
Right, exactly.
That had the determined quantities, I think.
Right, exactly.
The curd quantities are easy, easier, because it's a log and it's certified.
I can't imagine a log saying what bobcats are in use and for what.
I agree. That's not practical.
And this becomes a really interesting question, because it's fairly easy on the weekdays and on Saturday to tell, because the landscaping business and the nursery business are both going at the same time. So, they're both cutting out at the same time. If something's running at 8:00 o'clock at night, we know it's a violation, right? Sunday becomes the tricky one, because one use is allowed to have noisy equipment, and one use is not allowed to have noisy equipment.
That just comes down to number of vehicles being used.
What was the difference in the hours again? I'm sorry. 9:00 to 6:00 versus 10:00 to 2:00?
Um...
10:03, I'm sorry.
Hang on, let me pull it out.
9:06 and 10:03.
So, on Sundays, 9:00 to 6:00...
We had 10:03.
For nursery, nothing at all for landscaping. So, any noise, and, and ours says 10:03 for nursery, but if we're staying away from nursery and just letting the 2001 decision rule on nursery, then...
I don't, I thought, I think you had touched on it, Brian. I thought, I thought we already discussed this, and indicated to ourselves that we don't have a position to address the nursery.
Well, we don't, so, but, but I guess burden of, the burden of proof, you're innocent until you're proven guilty in, in this country, so if someone wants to say that there are...
Not, not true.
You have to say that to a lawyer, right?
You're presumed innocent. Not, you're not necessarily innocent.
Excellent classification. But in any case, if, you know, it's going to come down to if there's two bobcats running, they're, it's probably going to be fine. If there's three running, take a picture.
Two.
And, yeah, you've got, you know, bring it to the building inspector's office Monday morning.
But the other thing is, though, what is their restriction? 9:06 or 10:03?
Well...
I, I thought we were saying we related...
I think that relies on the special permit. That's my opinion.
I think that the author of this, I think you and Tim should think about this.
We can make a proposal and see what the board thinks at the next meeting.
I think you should, I think you should make a proposal, because it does seem to me that we're not, we don't have a solution that's satisfactory to me yet.
And we don't have a solution to, tonight, I think. I think this is something we need to think about further.
On the hours, excluding Sunday, I, I was thinking...
Yep.
In all honesty, what Brian indicated, and that is, I'd be more inclined to agree on an extension of the hour on Monday through Friday and not necessarily on Saturday.
So, you would also do the 7:00 to 6:00 Monday through Friday, but the 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturday?
I'd be receptive to that.
Alex, how do you feel about that? Allow the earlier hour on Monday through Friday, but not the earlier hour on Sunday?
Well, the earlier hour was in the original zoning, and on Saturday, on Saturday, what is, I have, I have to look at the, the comparison. I mean, Eagle has, has a sweet deal.
Eagle can do whatever they want, pretty much.
But I'll take a look at Thomas.
What else do we want to discuss tonight? Is there anything else in here that, based on our discussion at the last meeting?
You're going to, you're going to talk about the traffic pattern that the, the delivery's going to take...
Yes.
To minimize the, the noise situation, the, the zoning on lighting.
Yes.
Says...
Yeah, that's also been an issue that has been brought up a couple of times, so...
Reasonably necessary lighting while minimizing light overspill onto the neighboring properties. It seems to me that, seems to me that one of these decisions had a light provision in it.
Ah. That would be helpful.
But I don't, I, I, I mentioned that, and we'll take a look and see if it does. Maybe it's a 1967 permit.
Yeah, and I've got the permit, so I think, Tim, when you and I do this, we should also just double-check and make sure that we're not doing something that's conflicting...
There's a law...
In the wrong direction with an earlier permit, so...
Yeah, take a look at the, the numbered conditions on a...
In the 1967?
In the 67 permit, because they have, it says in number 3, "No advertising signs of any kind or floodlights shall be erected on the premises."
Okay.
And I don't know, what they've got there is, may not be a floodlight, but it's pretty close to being a floodlight.
We have had comments about a fact, yes, absolutely, and we've seen pink...
And the question that we're going to have to answer is whether or not all those big lights are necessary, or...
Or is there another lighting?
Didn't we talk one time in discussion about having them shut down, like an hour after closing, or?
Or, or even at closing itself. I think we also talked about the position of the lights, that they should be downward-directed, so they're not facing out into the neighbor's property.
Shields?
Yeah, shields, maybe even the 90% cutoff shield. And then, I think, to your point, having a required shut-off time is a, is a good one.
That's in, that's in this draft. Floodlights will be turned off at the closing of business operations each night.
Well, you can't call them floodlights, because they're prohibited under the 1967 permit.
What page is that?
I did put the page numbers on.
Yes. Appreciated, greatly appreciated. All right.
You got, you got that in as well, the shielding. This all comes to the shielding.
Shielding and, and...
I got that 90 degree cutoff.
I guess, I guess the question, once again, are the lights all necessary?
Okay.
And...
Yep.
I mean, I guess they're necessary to illuminate sales areas, but...
All right, so lighting, yeah.
My only comment on lighting, I think it's, I want to make sure that we are sensitive to not just spill over, but the view to the light, the glare, especially with the spots, they're just, it can be pretty tough.
Well, we have the 90 degree cutoff, but even that may not be enough to cut glare, so...
I mean, 90 degrees, still, I think...
It still could, yeah, so, I'll put in a, Tim and I will put in a...
They have a shield down to 45 or something?
I mean, that's...
No, I don't know, the answer to that. Yeah. Spotlight.
Spotlight.
Brighter light.
Light.
Yeah, light. So, but if, you know, if the 1967 special permit, as Alex pointed out, is prohibiting floodlights, and we should probably continue that into, Tim and I can go through and look for any express prohibitions in those permits that should be reflected in this. So, anything else we want to discuss tonight?
I have a question on ornamentation, if I, can I ask, can I?
Yes.
Ask the applicant a question?
Ask it here.
I'll ask you.
Ask me first, and then, the board may have a...
So, I guess my question on ornamentation is sort of, what are they, what are they talking about, right?
Right.
And we talked about size and whatnot.
Right.
I mean, I think we started to get towards the discussion about whether there can be display on-site with direct shipping, and I guess I'd just, for me, it would be helpful to hear the applicant's perspective on that. If that's a good solution, then that might be, that might be the direction we can go. If it's not, I'd like to know kind of just what's the mass of what we're talking about here. To your point, is it a...
Well, what?
Three-ton fountain, or is it a...
Right, is it a...
What are we talking about?
Right, okay.
Where does this come in?
So, one of the things that the board can authorize in, let me find it for you, Alex.
It's page 5.
Yeah.
It's, it's 2.
Oh, sorry.
In the zoning. It's, it's paragraph 2, definition, definition of landscape business permissible activities. So, we have what we...
Landscape ornamentations?
Landscape ornamentations. We do not, the applicant had submitted a quite broad definition of landscape ornamentations.
What did they say?
It covered a lot of things that are typically sold at retail. I don't have it in front of me. I don't know if you've got it with you, Tim.
I don't know.
Where is it?
Lance, you mean on this? We didn't, I didn't put the definition that they had submitted in this draft. So, our question, or the question that I'd raised, and Tim and I had bounced back and forth and decided to bring to all of you, is that we don't actually define what ornamentations are. So, since we're being so specific on everything else in this permit, we should probably be specific that if we allow ornamentation, we're clear on what that ornament, what that actually means.
But look at the context.
Yes.
It's, it's, uh, stone, stone dust, gravel, pavers, landscape ornamentations, timbered and related materials. I mean, I...
So, what's a landscape ornamentation?
What's the, what's the anticipated negative impact? What are we, what are we trying to avoid here? What are we looking at saying that...
Authorizing the retail business under the landscaping permit.
Shades, long...
Now, if landscaping ornamentations are defined as smaller objects that can be sold at retail, they're not a landscaping business.
It's nursery.
And it's potentially nursery, but the, the definition we were provided by the applicant, which I should have brought with me, was in fact broad enough to cover a retail operation. And so, we need to be specific about what landscape, if you remember in the memo that the building commissioner gave us, he asked us not to authorize things like patio furniture. So, we just have to, if we're going to say that they can do landscape ornamentation as part of the landscaping business, what they sell there, we need to be specific about what that is.
Can you tie it to the idea of being fixed?
Well, that's what I had originally been thinking of, was it was something that required a landscape professional to install, which is why I was thinking of...
Which it has to be, just because it's part of the landscaping business.
Exactly, exactly.
But the, but the extra word of fixed means it's not...
It's part of the landscape.
It cannot be logically taken away and brought to another place once installed.
Yeah. Or not without a landscaper to help out.
Logic was, logic was the wrong word. It cannot, it cannot be removed without taking away from the landscaping, without taking away from the whole concept. You can't take the pavers and not put them back.
Right. Did you find it?
I mean, there, there's a bit in, in the application.
It was a separate one. Let me see if I can find it while you read that out.
Patio furniture, fire pits, long games, complement garden and outdoor living, which I think is kind of what you're getting at.
Excluded, they should be excluded.
This is, this is indefinite.
This is what they suggest should be included. But it is a wish list.
Yeah, then that's different than fixed, for sure.
And that's why I'm saying we need to be cognizant of how we define it.
It's stuff that's shown on the landscape plan that they're going to install. They're going to do a landscape plan that's going to cost you $10,000, and this is what you're going to get. And if they say, well, I mean, and I do think it has to be fixed as part of the landscape.
So... All right. So part of landscape plan and installed as part of that. Okay. And fixed.
Items that are intended to be fixed in place.
Yep. I think that's a reasonable way of...
Yeah, I mean, the concept of fixture in real estate is pretty well-defined.
Right.
Lawn furniture isn't fixed.
Lawn furniture would not be fixed.
Okay. Anything else on here that you want to clarify tonight? And then let's talk about our next steps.
This... Have we done the wood operation?
I don't think we've had a full discussion of the wood operation. What would you like to bring up?
Well, I mean, we do have times that I think the zoning provides for when they can make deliveries of it.
Yep, deliveries are all...
I think that we should... We should... Deliveries in and deliveries out, insofar as possible, should be done during the week.
That's what we were trying to talk about last time, is we have incoming deliveries limited to 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We didn't have anything on outgoing deliveries. Do we want to put some sort of... Do we have any thoughts about?
I think we should require the majority and perhaps a percentage of whatever that they occur during the week during hours when people aren't going to be there.
Okay.
And, you know, what the percentage should be, I make a suggestion. But I'm thinking at least 60%, maybe 70 or 80%.
Doesn't that get into a commission? Getting hard to enforce, again?
Good, reasonable question.
Well, except for the fact they will know when they're making their deliveries, because they're going to have invoices. People are going to pay for that.
It's easy to enforce on renewal. It's harder to enforce by the building inspector.
Do we want to require logs for outgoing deliveries as well as incoming deliveries?
Well, they have them, I'm sure, anyway.
Okay. So... All right.
I guess that was presumptive of me to assume that, but...
I mean, the...
So, yes, I think we should require that.
Because the hours of... Firewood have to be fall the same hours we've already set, right, for the landscaping business?
No, they don't have to be.
Well, that was the only... I think that's part of the question is do we...
Isn't the firewood regulated under this special permit for landscaping?
It can be... It can have different hours.
Well, but if we don't give it different hours, then it doesn't.
Correct.
Well, that's right. But, of course, if we don't mention that it's included, it's not.
So do you want to restrict...
We didn't mention it's included, it would be.
So do you want to restrict? I mean, do you want to specifically restrict the firewood to the same hours of operation as the rest of the business?
Oh, yeah, sure. We don't want them delivering firewood at 5:00 in the morning.
Okay, well...
We don't want them waking people up at 7:00 in the morning on Saturday or Sunday to deliver firewood.
So they would not be allowed to start delivering firewood, presumably loading and delivering firewood until they're open for business that morning? Okay, that makes sense.
Or, you know, it does seem to me that there are cases where undoubtedly they've got to make a weekend delivery and can't... Or an early morning delivery. I've been there, undoubtedly there's cases. But in general, in general, they should do it at a time that doesn't impact...
Are you talking about outgoing deliveries? Or are you talking about incoming?
Outgoing and incoming.
Okay.
I mean, the incoming, they can figure it out.
That's why we're asking them to keep logs outside of the delivery hours, which are 9:00 to 2:00. So... But those 9:00 to 2:00, I think what I'm hearing you say...
We put a further restriction on the incoming.
Well, that's what I want to clarify.
Because incoming is in well trucks, is that right?
Yeah, I thought we were pretty strict on the incoming.
When I said it falls the permit that exists, I was talking about the outgoing.
The incoming are restricted to 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Monday through Friday.
Which they should be.
Right. What I'm asking is, do you want those same hours for outgoing? Or do you want the outgoing to be limited to the business hours?
I would just limit it to the business hours.
Okay.
That's what I would say.
I would think they could do it between 9:00 and 4:00.
In which case, they can't deliver on Sundays, because they can't operate as landscaping businesses on Sunday.
Except with special... You know you make the exception.
Those exceptions that are, you know, going to be critical. So...
That's what's caused all the problems.
How do you define an exception? Is it one time per month?
How do you define the exception?
I'm lost. Why are we allowing exceptions?
Well, that's what I'm...
Because they have said that there are people who say, "We'll buy firewood, but we need it now. And I'm not going to be around during the week. We need it this weekend. I'll go somewhere else if you don't..."
Well, load up your truck and park it in Randolph and deliver it on Sunday if you want it.
Well, I don't know. It seems to me that exceptions can be made without throwing away the rule.
I need a loaf of bread and a gallon of milk instantaneously, but I don't know about a quart of firewood.
I don't know. I guess I'm a little concerned about exceptions in this case. I just... I think the building inspector needs to know when to pull the...
If you allow exceptions, then you...
Not that he's around on those days anyway.
I've been... If the building inspector is the best we got, I'm not sure that he's going to be worried a great deal about firewood.
I just don't know who else we would have on a weekend is the problem.
There's no one on weekends.
Right, exactly. It's, you know, that's... We have the building commissioner and the rest of the building department during the week. And on weekends, I mean, I'm assuming that...
I know we had testimonies saying that the weekend deliveries are sometimes important.
Right.
And so I think we've got to...
So then I think we need to continue thinking about what we do if there are exceptions. Obviously, we're requiring a log, so we'll know that there have been exceptions. We're going to have to think about how we handle those. There are problems...
I wouldn't encourage exceptions.
Well, I mean, I think that comes up in the review, is if we say...
If you come back at two years or three years of the permit stuff, and they say, oh, two times they deliver it outside, all right.
Right. But if the exceptions are 10 exceptions per week, then we have another issue.
I wouldn't verbalize exceptions or encourage exceptions.
If you say that 80% of the deliveries have to be during the week between these hours, that... I mean, that's one way of doing it.
No, no, but Alex, I'm just thinking. I mean, one of the biggest things that's come out of this whole process is, how do you enforce this?
We haven't figured that... We haven't figured it out yet.
I mean, if I'm up there and I'm even more... If you ask me to monitor eight hours a day, five days a week, and you say 20% could be outside, I'm going to have a hard time starting saying, wait a minute, now, wait a minute. We had 10 trucks out there. What... How much is the total? Because you told me I could have 20% outside and 80% inside. What's the total? Well, the total's different this year, so you...
Do you disregard the fact that they say they need... Their business needs the ability to make some of these deliveries? I mean, you can do that.
I'm not disregarding it. I'm saying I'm letting it happen during normal business hours. For me, that's just kind of where I'm at.
You can't deliver a firewood from 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and then hours on Saturday and forget about Sunday?
What?
You can't just deliver it on those hours? I mean, how many people needed quarter wood at a moment's notice?
On Sunday.
On Sunday.
On Sunday, yeah.
You need it on a moment's notice, Monday through Friday. Most of the Saturday, you can get it.
I don't see any... You know, I think that these trucks, you try and minimize the truck traffic when kids are around and people are at home. You just try and do that. And it makes sense to me.
What else? Anything else for tonight?
On signs?
Yes.
I think that they specify what signs they have, and we leave it at that.
Yes.
As far as we... No, I mean, they've got some nursery signs currently out. We're not going to redo their signs.
That's... Board of Selectmen does the signs. We are noting their location and that.
They note it, and that's it.
Right.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
We have... I think that we want to make sure that we have a list of the rules they're going to impose on their employees.
Yep. I think that included using headphones and listening to music.
Right. And running equipment and turning equipment off and not leaving it idling.
They have headphones on, they don't need backup ones.
The insurance company's going to like it, though.
Yeah. And we've got some of those in this draft already.
The snow plowing, we've got to... We've got the equipment they used in 2012.
We have where the equipment will be stored on and off-season.
Right. And then the loading, presumably will load where the... Presumably, they will get ready to leave and load up sand and whatever, if they do sand. They probably don't. It's probably just plowing.
It was just plowing. I don't remember seeing invoices.
But they would leave from the central...
That land care yard.
That land care yard.
I think we can safely not put hours on snow plowing, given that snow does its thing, yeah.
No, snow plowing, I understand. People need it right away.
On smell, on smell. It does seem to me that...
They'll whittle you, stay warm away from the plow.
It seems to me that if there is a smell coming from mulch, there are a number of ways to deal with it. And... But dealt with it has to be. That, I mean, even the 1967 permit actually says that no unsightly piles of loam, no manure or fertilizer, which may have an odor. It doesn't mention mulch. But in any event, if there is an odor coming from mulch, one way of handling it is simply saying you can't store as much mulch.
Yep.
And I think that if covering it and, you know, if it continues to be a problem, then they've got to store less of it.
So I think that's... So we start off with the sprinklers that run at a regular basis. If that's not solving that, then they have to cover. If that's not solving that, then they have to reduce the amount on site?
We... I mean, the sprinklers suggest to keep it from getting airborne, not to saturate it.
Okay, so then the cover. If there's still an odor, cover. If there's still an odor, reduce the amount on site. If there's still an odor, then we've got some problems, so...
Well, I mean, you can put some general language in it. They need to mitigate it or...
Yeah.
Well, you can, but you do want them to do it during the tendency of the permit. You don't want to wait until however long it is.
Yeah, so they need to take whatever they can, right?
Right, yes. Let's respond to complaints within a reasonable amount of time. We should probably define reasonable amount of time, so...
I mean, we do have... There is a provision in this zoning that if there's a problem, there has to be a complaint receiver onsite. And that when you make a legitimate complaint, it's got to be solved forthwith, not years down the road. And, you know, there'll be a log of complaints and...
Good point.
And this is going to be one way of... This will feed into enforcement.
I'm assuming that we would then require, upon review of the special permit, we would require that log of complaints to be provided to us.
I would think so, just because, I mean, this is... This zoning does require a little self-help. It doesn't require the building inspector to look at the complaint. When someone comes up and says to the operator, "There's a problem," they've got to, in good faith, listen to the complaint and deal with it if it's a legitimate complaint.
Do we need to discuss ambient noise? We left that as an open item at the last meeting. We actually ended on that.
That's right, we did. What were your thoughts?
Boy, the way we left it last time, per Tim's helpful notes here, the key was going to be that we need to mitigate the additional impact of the addition of a landscaping business, and the permit needs to come up with an overall reduction of noise to be any good, which I think we all agreed with. So, all that was really left was determining... So I guess we just... The question on the table was, does ambient noise include nursery or not? And I think it does.
Yeah, unless the nursery wasn't there for the last...
Right, so I think it is.
As I remember, Alex brought up a good point, which was, yes, we absolutely want to mitigate the impact of adding the landscaping. That's 100%. But we also want to do our best to mitigate the impact of the nursery itself. So, maybe what we actually need are two levels. What's the ambient noise if just the nursery is operating? And what's the ambient noise without the nursery? So, but the question is, under what circumstances are we going to be looking at ambient noise?
You can't separate it. I mean, the noise is going to be of both operations, and it will differ. You're not going to be able to say, "This is nursery noise. This is landscape noise," with any particularity. And it does seem to me that if we're dealing with... I mean, if they want to continue to operate their nursery, they don't need a permit from us.
Right.
But if they want to do landscaping, then saying the amount of noise coming out of that site where you're doing the landscaping, given the fact that you can't break it down into two separate types of noise, you use the combined noise.
So, but then the question becomes, okay, we've required... We're requiring the fence. We're requiring the landscaping on both sides. The idea is that this will mitigate the additional noise of the landscaping, plus at least some of the noise from the nursery, right? So then there is a complaint from whomever that the fence and the landscaping are not doing the job of mitigating that noise. How do we determine the validity of that complaint?
First of all, you'd have to have a third-party sound engineer go out there and establish the ambient sound level.
Okay. And are we requiring that that ambient sound level be with or without the nursery noise?
Well, no, wait a minute. Who's going to pay for it? Who's going to do that?
Yeah, well, this is what we're asking when we look at mitigation.
Building inspector, send him out there.
Except he's already said that he's not buying one of the sound meters.
We'll buy one for him.
Are we going to whip around the collection?
We have some time on the October town meeting, I think.
Well, see, that's... If he doesn't have one and you have a complaint and you go out there, if you don't have a sound meter, then how do you know that...
We've got complaints now.
Right, so, but my...
I mean, I worked in Cambridge, and they have a sound level. And they have an ambient sound level and how much you can exceed it by.
Right.
And it was halved. And they called the police, and you say to the policeman, "Where's the sound meter?" He's going to say... He's going to say he's not happy with you and stop making the noise and shut it down now. So it's, you know, again, it's very subjective.
Ambient noise, I mean, the definite... You can't tell if something's 10 decibels over without knowing what the ambient noise and how high it's... I deal with it all the time in retail.
Right. I mean, these sound levels, they allow...
You're in exceptions, they say you can exceed the ambient for, you know, five minutes.
You know, what's going on now with the aircraft noise? People don't like the aircraft noise. It isn't as though that every time an airplane goes over, they say, "This is ambient and this is what happened." They say, "It's too loud. It's ruining our quality of life." You can say that. If you take the measurement, then, of course, you have to figure out what ambient is, but it doesn't mean you can't complain about the noise.
Oh, no. I understand that.
And if you... I mean, you know what a bobcat sounds like. At least, most people should know what. If you have two bobcats and they start up and they never stop, then you may have a legitimate complaint. You do have a legitimate complaint.
So all I'm trying to get from you is, when this comes back for its review, how do we judge?
This is why you're writing it. You're going to come up with a solution to this.
Oh, okay, good show.
I mean, when we talked about curry and stuff, you said that the policeman goes up there if he can't carry on a conversation with you with his tongue going off, it's too loud, drop it down.
And then the police said, "We don't want to do it."
Yes, yes, that was the problem with that, so... Okay, so Tim and I will confer her, and we'll come back. Well, so then this brings me to the question. Actually, are you...
I gotta believe this eight-foot fence with the sound intonation, it's got to help.
Better.
Well, I certainly hope so, because otherwise...
If I drop cards, the block's eight feet high, it would help.
The sound intonation guys should be out of business if it's not going to do any... But we have to provide for the fact that, what happens if it doesn't? What do we do? All right, so then that brings me to my next question, because I see Alex has closed his warrant. Do you feel at this point that it is worth Tim and myself drafting a draft special permit in the affirmative, that, yes, we're going to grant it, so that we can review all of these conditions? Is any of you sitting here thinking that there's absolutely no point Are, is any of you sitting here thinking that there's absolutely no point because there's no way I'm voting for that? How, how do you want us to proceed? Are we drafting something? And by saying that, you are not saying tonight that you're voting in favor. All I want to know is, are you, are we moving to the next step? Because if at this point, one of you is sitting here saying, "There's no way I'm going to approve this," there's no point in Tim and me spending the time to draft a special permit in the positive.
I think that even if one person said, "There's no way I'm going to not approve this," we still should do what you're suggesting.
Okay, so you want me to draft something?
Just because people, people don't know what they're voting on until they...
Until they see it?
Until they see it.
That's fine, I just want to make sure I have clear directions so that Tim and I know what we're doing going forward, and obviously, we'll be consulting with Bill. Alex, you may, may or may not see a draft come your way as well, so Alex has, of course, the most familiarity with writing special permits. So, the idea then, is we will work on a full draft in the affirmative for discussion at our next meeting. We will do our best to get it to you in plenty of time to review it.
Or you can do, you can do pieces. I think you're going to find that these things take a bit of time.
I have actually drafted one or two, as I recall, with your comments on them, Alex, and they do take a bit of time, so, okay, so then that's what we will do for the next meeting, we'll leave it at that. This has been very helpful. On zoning, which is the next item on our agenda, I don't have much, at some point, we need to take a formal vote on the warrant committee's recommendation, and I will double-check on their recommendation for town meeting for the January zoning. I have asked town council to look at the ability to regulate sound and light for entities under the Dover Amendment, and also to look at what would happen if those were general bylaw rather than a zoning bylaw, so he's working his way into that, and that's just what I wanted to report. Tim, I think, has been doing some research on some of the other provisions. He'd asked me about B&amp;B, so I'm hoping at our next meeting, I wanted to wait till Cheryl got back before we had an in-depth conversation, but, or back to this meeting, rather, so I think at our next meeting, we'll start a more in-depth conversation about what we brought up, unless anybody has anything to that point tonight.
Well, I would like to say that on the non-conforming buildings...
Yes.
The, I listened to the chairman of the warrant committee, who said that lawyers came in and, they just, there's all sorts of stuff that we should cover here.
Yes.
And the reason this was in the warrant is that the lawyer said, "We have a problem," and I thought this addressed the problem, but if the lawyers think that there are other problems that can be better addressed, far be it for me to push forward, let them come up with something for, for me. And the other thing is that Bill should ask the chief why the police can't get out there and enforce the amplified music. It will get them to meet the, meet the people.
So, just to let everybody know who hadn't had a chance to watch that, when I appeared in front of the warrant committee, there were two main questions, and one on the amplified music was that the chief of police was not eager to be the enforcing agent for that, so the warrant committee also, you know, when we'd had our public hearing, there was a citizen who's also a member of the warrant committee that had been interested in a larger sound bylaw beyond amplified music, and the warrant committee also seemed to think that there was an opportunity for us to look into a wider bylaw, there was some discussion of that. So, they had voted to send that back to us.
To the point on sound, I mean, we talked about it with lighting as well, it seems like sound should probably be considered as a general bylaw.
Which was Alex's point in putting it in there, so...
So, we're going to be able to operate the blowers on Sundays now, and that's going to affect the landscaping.
Except the chief, the building inspector to do it, and of course, the building inspector wants the chief to do it.
So, when we consider this for putting forward in January, we should consider it as a general bylaw, and that's why I've got town council looking at that portion, and we also need to think about, do we want it to be beyond amplified music, cover, lawn, leaf blowers and other things? And, of course, other towns have done this, so we'll have a chance to look at that.
I think we've got to, we've got to go more global, just because...
I think you have to.
Go big or go home.
It's going to happen at town meeting, otherwise.
If we don't go more global, you know, we've got to go more globally.
Yeah, I agree, I agree on that.
And I think most of your sound violations are going to happen after hours and on weekends. I just don't think it's reasonable to inspect, to put that to the building inspector, because people typically are not complaining about sound at 3:00 on a Monday.
So, then, right, and so then we need to think about how that's going to do. So, with the other one, Alex's summary is exactly right. We had, we had, in our discussions, been looking at a particular issue that had been brought forward to us. When I got to the warrant committee, the chair of the warrant committee had been talking to the building inspector, so it became clear, and we had others at the meeting, it became clear that some people thought we were solving one problem, some people thought we were solving other problems, some people thought there were additional problems to be solved, and it's, and so what they had done was talked to town council to see if there, and, and the warrant committee chair and the building inspector thought it should be in one part of the bylaw, we had proposed a different bylaw, so the chair of the warrant committee contacted town council to say, "Are any of these within the scope of the article?" And as I reported our last meeting, right before our meeting, he got back to say, "No, they are not within the scope of the article." So, it made, I think, the warrant, the warrant committee has not already voted to do so. My understanding was that they were going to vote to send that back to us as well, and I think it would be a good idea for us to define the questions so that everybody is on board with the same question, and then we can discuss how we're going to solve it, because clearly...
By the way, we should agree to send it back and...
I would agree to send it back, because as I said to the chair when he contacted me, I said, "Look, if you send it back to us now, we have a chance of getting it in for January and May, and that's fine, that works out well, we can already start with those discussions." So, so I think next, at our next meeting, we need to do that. And then finally, Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve, I'm assuming you guys don't want to meet on those days, so if you, if you feel that we're in a position to skip one or both of those, that would be great. We have had quite a year so far, as far as meetings go. If you think we need those meetings, one or both of them, then obviously, we need to take a different date, so. I will say that I am currently booked solid for Thanksgiving week, so it would have to be the week prior, the week after from my schedule, but obviously...
I would probably propose, probably don't need the last meeting in December.
As long as we're spot on with our zoning stuff, because, of course, it'll be the first week in January, that they're all due to the selectmen.
Oh, yeah.
And we have, we have no...
Probably retract what I just said.
I'm wondering if we...
It's probably going to be a critical meeting.
I agree with that.
But it doesn't have to be Christmas Eve, it could be earlier that week, or it could be the week between Christmas and New Year's. That one, go home and look at your calendars and let me know. Thanksgiving week, I'm wondering if we need that meeting. We'll have just been through town meeting, I'm hoping that maybe the, if we can't...
We need to do in two meetings in December for zoning?
Well, two meetings in December for zoning and one in November. Do you think we need two meetings in November? Again, we don't have to necessarily decide this tonight.
Depends on how much we're doing for January.
Yeah.
Remember what's on your schedule already. You've got 3341 Pleasant Street for the definitive subdivision.
Oh, that's right, I forgot they were coming in.
Starting up next meeting, 22nd.
What time are they coming in?
7:15.
7:15, okay, good, so, all right. Do we have any other known entities coming up? I mean, obviously, we have to finish whatever we're doing on there, needs to happen. I'm hoping, if not next meeting, and given Alex's comment, a good point on the draft, it'd be nice if we could wrap that up one way or the other, the first meeting in November. I think that would be nice for everybody concerned.